Good evening, everyone. My name's Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, and I'm calling our meeting to order. Thank you for turning into our virtual city council study session tonight as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. Before we get started, I wanted to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the meeting. There will be one opportunity for public comment on the study session item only, which will take place during item number four after staff's presentation and council discussion on the item. As a reminder, this is a study session and no formal council action will be taken. To speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that item on which you are speaking is called. And please keep your hand raised until your name is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Our regular city council meeting is scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, Gee, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting's being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on a stown broadband channel, cable channel 26, and Comcast cable channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99, and we're streaming live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when city council members and city staff are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties. I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she would call the roll.
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to item 3A, the study session on the regional housing needs allocation, otherwise known as RENA, and the process to update housing and safety elements and to prepare an environmental justice element or related goals and policies. Our community development and transportation director, Mark Munzer, will introduce the item, and principal planner Diana Odell will give the presentation. The city's consultant Lisa Brownfield from MIG has also joined us tonight to answer any questions. Mr. Munzer?
Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of city council. Thank you for welcoming us this evening. We are excited to be here as we begin this introductory process for the regional housing needs allocation, as you noted, otherwise known by its acronym of RENA, just how we'll refer to it throughout this process, and also to talk about the housing element predominantly. Next slide, please. We are also joined this evening by Assistant Community Development and Transportation Director Sue Exline and Housing Leadership Manager Lynn Lancaster, should you have additional questions beyond myself, Diana, and Lisa Brownfield with MIG. I want to thank each of them as always for their hard work on the housing element today. We will keep the presentation as brief as possible in order to maximize the opportunity for your questions and comments as well as the public, and keeping in mind that this is an introductory conversation. It's our first of many conversations as we begin the fairly long housing element process. For tonight's agenda, as you can see on the screen, we want to discuss the extensive progress that we've made in the last six years on the current housing element and not lose sight of that, in that we met many of our housing goals for this RENA cycle and also developed many innovative housing policies. Then we'll talk about where we need to be for the next housing element cycle in terms of RENA housing unit requirements, new potential housing policies to help us meet those substantially higher RENA requirements, which Diana will review, and also to discuss potential developments that are currently under review that could assist in meeting those requirements. For the third bullet point on this slide, the city will also need to update both our general plan, safety element, which we've done before, as well as create a new environmental justice element. In those, the EJ element or environmental justice element, we'll develop policies and frameworks to make sure that we actively support all of our community members. And then this will be done with the, and of course, done with a focus on equity as is the guiding principle of the city council. Finally, for number four there, we will conclude with our next steps for both community engagement as well as for land use and planning studies. Next slide, please. So the questions for council this evening, as usual, we will end with these in light of the late start in time. I'm going to just quickly note that question number one, so once you hear this presentation, if there's specific types of housing or other strategies that you would like us to look at in the various zoning districts that are included in the city, then that would be an opportunity for that. Are there specific geographic areas or corridors that you would like identified as potential housing sites? You'll see in this presentation that we start to discuss Woodside Road as a potential opportunity for a new mixed-use corridor or an expanded mixed-use corridor. And then for three and four, we will talk to you what we have in mind in terms of community engagement. We start with an event. We had one with 21 elements this month. We start one specifically for our residents in May. And then the last one will be, since the environmental justice element is new for us, any of your thoughts on that? So with that, I will turn it over to Diana. Thanks, Diana.
Great, thank you. Good evening. While many of you have worked with housing elements in the past, I want to briefly review what a housing element contains. At the bottom, we have three sort of key points of analysis. We look at our housing needs assessment. What are our population and demographics right now? What are the characteristics of our existing housing stock? And then we also look at constraints. What kinds of forces prevent us from building the housing that our community needs, whether they be market forces, zoning forces, or other types of restrictions? And then lastly, we look for areas to build sites for new housing that can meet our community needs. And all of these are building blocks that really build towards creating goals, policies, and implementation strategies that give us a roadmap for where we want to be in the next eight years. Next slide. These implementation programs can span a variety of different actions. As you can see, these are programs that we've been working on in this current element cycle, and they can vary with everything from partnerships with nonprofit housing providers. They can be preserving existing affordable units or preserving new or creating new units. They can also be creating new rules so that new housing must include a certain percentage of affordable housing. And we've seen that produce quite a number of units in some of our mixed-use projects over the last several years. And it can be simple things like changing our zoning requirements so they can spur production of new types of housing that meets the community needs. Next slide. And all of these programs lead towards meeting our city's RENA. And as Mark mentioned, this is the regional housing needs allocation. And our current RENA is 2,700 units approximately, and those are separated over four different income categories that are targeted towards very, you know, low income all the way up to sort of market rate or what we call above moderate units. And the city's been doing really well in meeting our RENA needs. As you can see, we have exceeded our low income and our above moderate. We are expected to exceed that by the end of our RENA cycle. And while we still have some progress to go on very low and moderate, we have built 350 very low-income units in the last six years, which is really an accomplishment. However, looking at these numbers, we'll have to train our eyes towards the future and have to look at our next eight years, which will be almost double. So we'll be looking at a total RENA of about 4,600 units with over 1,000 very low. And so we need to start thinking about strategies of how we're going to build those types of units in the next eight years. Next slide. But some of that work has already begun. The city is starting environmental review for the transit district, which could create the possibility of up to 1,000 new units next to jobs in transit. City is also considering a series of what we're calling gatekeeper projects, which are individual development projects that provide both market rate and affordable units. While these are currently being studied through a community process, these could have the potential to address up to half of our RENA allocation for the next eight years. In addition to these sort of larger sets of projects, we also have a whole series of smaller and midsize development projects that are in the works and will continue to be submitted over the next eight years that will also help us address our RENA. Despite these projects, we're still looking to look at for some other strategies to meet our RENA needs. Next slide, please. So this is a zoning map of the city. And as you can see, this, I've simplified it a little bit, but generally yellow is single-family. Oranges and tans are multifamily. Red is sort of commercial. Industrial is purple, and our downtown areas in the center, and that is where we've seen a lot of the development here. So almost all the development that we've seen in the last six years are located in these three green circle areas, which is downtown El Camino and Veterans Broadway. So we may need to look outside of these areas in order to address our new upcoming needs. And I do want to mention, let's go to the next slide because I don't want to leave out Redwood Shores. It's hard to sort of fit it all on one slide. So I do want to note here in Redwood Shores where you have both single-family and multifamily, we also have zoning for Commercial Park, which is Office, Oracle, and we have some other precise plan areas for townhomes. And in the last several years, we have approved some new office development in Redwood Shores as well as a new Design Tech High School. Next slide, please. So these are some initial thoughts about what some of the strategies could be in order to meet our housing needs. And I'll spend a little bit of time on each one of these strategies. So first is missing middle housing. This is a type of housing that council and HHCC and Planning Commission have been talking about for the last couple of years. And what it is, is a smaller type of building of two, three, or four units. And these are often mixed in with single-family or in neighborhoods of other duplexes and triplexes. It's called missing because we haven't seen much development of this type of housing in the last 50 years or so. And so we're looking, a lot of cities are taking a look and seeing what can we do to sort of encourage this type of housing, to create more flexibility and more housing options. For the purposes of this strategy, it's not necessarily middle income, though I think that's also sort of an interest and a strategy that we'll have to look at for the next cycle as well, is how to target middle-income community members as well, meet their housing needs. As Mr. Munzer mentioned, we will be looking at extending our mixed-use corridor. We saw a lot of that housing along El Camino and Veterans. Maybe we should focus on Woodside for this next cycle. It's got good bus lines, it's got a good arterial, and that might be an appropriate place for some more mixed-use housing. We'll also look at our downtown and see if there's additional capacity for residential development. We've seen quite a bit so far, but there might be worth taking a look and seeing if there's other ways to sort of increase housing next to transit and shopping. And I do want to stress that we'll also be looking at anti-displacement measures, measures to protect existing residents and allow them to remain in our community. Currently, the housing division is looking at ways to create anti-displacement measures, and they're expected to return to council this fall with a series of strategies to prevent displacement. Next slide, please. So now I'll move on really quickly to environmental justice and safety elements. These are part of state law, and we're required to update these elements. In this case, we have an existing safety element, and what we'll be needing to do is to update that. In light of the recent fires and sea level rise concerns, updating this analysis and incorporating it into our land use policies is an important step for sustainable housing and development in the city. The city also has three tracks that will qualify as disadvantaged communities, which is a technical term for the environmental justice element, which means there are communities where we want to take extra special care and look at the types of pollution burden, socioeconomic characteristics, health and wellness, and food access, as well as other policies to improve the neighborhood quality overall of these neighborhoods within our city. So we will be reviewing our existing general plan for some of those policies and also working very closely with residents and community members to get additional ideas on policies and programs to improve. Next slide. These types of strategies can include policies from improving air quality and limiting pollution exposure, healthy food, park access, safe and sanitary housing, as well as other types of policies. Next slide, please. Which brings us to equity. And as a foundational guiding principle, this housing element and the update process for environmental justice and safety element will be considering equity throughout the process. So in engagement, specific steps are taken to engage underrepresented groups, including multilingual materials, stakeholder groups, and community partnerships. The consulting team with City Input has created a list of organizations and individual calls are actually being made to these groups to invite them to participate in our process. Equity involves not just the input, but also the assessment of our policies. So when we propose changes to our zoning or propose changes to our policy, we'll be doing an analysis of the benefits and burdens of those policies and who is being benefited and who is being burdened by that. And so that will be a very sort of thoughtful and careful analysis that we'll be conducting as part of our policy process. And then lastly, staff will be looking at creating monitoring programs to assess the effectiveness of these policies on equity measures. Next slide, please. So right now, staff is gearing up for our first workshop on May 12th from 6:00 to 7:30. It will still be virtual. I have a picture on the slide of in person. Hopefully someday soon we'll be able to do that, but for right now, we'll be continuing to do virtual workshops. And we'll be doing additional workshops, surveys, interviews, stakeholder groups, small group meetings, and we'll be continuing that throughout the process. So this is really just the very first step. We'll be doing a series of both digital and non-digital outreach to our community, and I have a lot more information on that if people have questions. And we'll be targeting outreach to youth and teens, non-English speakers, disabled community, renters, Latinx, Hispanic, and Black community members, low-income households and residents experiencing homelessness. Next step, next slide, please. So these are the overall steps of the housing element process, and they look nice and neat in these boxes. Some of these steps will overlap each other, but right now, we're in the initial stage of spring-fall where we're looking at community values and housing strategies with the community. Based on that input and our analysis, we will be developing a series of strategies and come up with a preferred housing strategy in late fall of this year. At that point, we will start environmental review on that strategy, and we'll be continuing this with public comment and looking at final reviews in summer of 2022 with Planning Commission, HHCC, and city council. Lastly, in this element is expected to be adopted in late fall of 2022. So unlike many studies that the city undertakes, this process does have a hard deadline. The elements must be prepared and submitted to the state by January 2023 for certification, and this does create constraints. We have to continue to move quickly and efficiently through all the steps of analysis and community engagement. And so the consulting team in the city is working very closely to make sure that we can hit all of these milestones and still get the appropriate outreach and input that we need. Next slide. I have information on this slide for more information, how people can find out more. We do have a specific website. You can sign up for updates, and we're also supplementing that with informational flyers. And members of the public are always welcome to call us. So, next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. I will turn this over to Mr. Munzer, and he can summarize with the council questions for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Diana. Appreciate that. So we'll get right to the questions, just a few comments before we get going. I think that the slide that I find most helpful, also just for the clerks' notice, I'm fine to keep this slide up, is the next up slide, because really, there's six kind of blocks of action and activity in time that the city needs to take, thank you very much, that the city needs to take in order to get us to that January 2023 submission to the state of California. And as Diana mentioned, unique for us and everybody, we have a hard stop. And so we have, you know, committed staff, we have committed consultants, and, you know, we are ready to go and we're excited to go. This is going to be a really interesting process to help us meet our next RENA requirement. Mayor Howard, just so you know, Diana is really our point person on this. She's my go-to person, and I think that she will be the person that probably will answer most of the questions. I, of course, will be here to answer, you know, capacity questions and kind of more general departmental questions, but just in the interest of time, she's our pro. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer. And it's nice to see you, Ms. Odell. I'm glad you're the point person. Nice to see you. So I'm going to have council discussion at this time. That's where we're going to begin, and I'll start with council member Ready.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, staff. So I, as someone who worked with Redwood City as a resident with the past housing element, my excitement and condolences to you. The process. So two questions. One is with the commercial areas, and I was kind of intrigued with the very large commercial areas in Redwood Shores and was wondering if there's automatically opportunity for multi-use that would include housing, or is commercial only zone for commercial?
Thank you, council member Ready. So the area in Redwood Shores is zoned Commercial Park, which is specific to Office Commercial. It does not currently allow residential.
Okay, I thought that might be the case. And then my other question is that part of putting a housing element together is to do an analysis of the income levels of all residents in the city. And Mr. Munzer made a comment about wanting to create a housing element that ensures housing for all of our residents, right? And so the one piece that has always been missing from the housing element and the requirements from the state is the ELI. And so I want us in Redwood City to include extremely low income as one of the income levels that's included for residents in our city. These are the ones who are the most at risk of homelessness and of being pushed into homelessness. So those are my two questions. Thank you so much for doing this. I'm very excited.
Thank you, council member Ready. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, more so comments, I would say, but one question at least, but I hope to share a couple of comments. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so overall, I really appreciate this. I really appreciated the presentation. I'm really excited to see some of the stuff that we spoke about and has been raised by many people, issues like fighting displacement. And so I'm really looking forward to this and having this discussion moving forward with everyone and looking forward to the strategies that were brought up as well. I'm very much open to, you know, changing our zoning laws, as I've mentioned before. Personally, I'd be in favor of doing what neighbors have done, like in Berkeley of ending residential zoning because of the ways it's kept cost up. You know, and I hope to hear, I shared a lot of stuff before with Mr. Munzer where I got a lot of my inspiration, which is this PDF y'all can look at. It's a briefing book called Homes Guarantee, and some of the stuff I was looking at and, you know, hope to see as consider as stuff like the flipping tax, which would be something that would give us more funding. It would tax the difference in earnings from flipping houses. So that's great. And I'm definitely interested in looking more stuff like seeing if there's ways to tax outside, I think it's mentioned in the Homes Guarantee briefing book, like outside landlords, like out-of-state landlords, and ways to prevent that or, you know, limit that, so it would also help with our speculation. So I'd be interested to see, I'd be interested to see that thrown in, you know? I'm sure there's definitely lots of things being considered, and I'm very excited to see that. One thing I will ask is for number four is, I'm curious if we can look into receiving some type of study that would show us health expectancy or like life expectancy rates by neighborhood? Because I'm familiar of state programs that have, you know, helped identify marginalized neighborhoods to help alleviate the environmental impacts in their neighborhoods because it's disproportionate to the rest. So Oakland, for example, uses the CAL ENVIR screen and has, it can show you by like using a heat map or heat tool, you know, the environmental conditions and tell you things about life expectancy and stuff. So I'm wondering if there's like anything like this that could be possible because it's very, you know, appealing because of how much it's easy to engage for the public and to learn more. But, you know, definitely collaborative with the state, I think. So I'm curious if there's ways to make awareness basically more easily accessible on the environmental impacts and, you know, qualities in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Those are good comments, and I did just want to mention that we will be using the CAL ENVIR screen for part of our environmental justice work.
Thank you very much. My next speaker is Michael Smith, excuse me, council member Smith. I'm sorry.
No problem, Mayor Howard. Appreciate that. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this. I just want to echo what my colleagues have already said, that this is going to be really interesting work. It's really going to, I think, push the city to answer a lot of questions, specifically, of course, around housing, but other policy areas that we need to grapple with as, you know, time moves forward and our community continues to grow. So I have one quick question that hopefully won't be, it may be a simple yes or no, but the question is about single-family residential design guidelines. How does that process and the finalization of those guidelines, if at all, impact this housing element conversation?
It doesn't impact it directly. So we will continue to have conversations throughout the housing element about our single-family neighborhoods and what they want, what we want them to look like.
Yeah, so I thought that's what you would say, and I have like a bit of a follow-on question to that. So with the development of this housing element program in conjunction with, like say, a parallel path residential design guideline, is it reasonable to say that we could potentially further be creating distinctions between different areas of the city? So let's say that we decide to go up Woodside and rezone that area, which is already a bit upzoned actually based on your map, and then we implement these residential design guidelines. Again, is it, are we essentially solidifying this kind of, for lack of a better term, inequitable distribution of single-family residences and kind of what that looks like? And then kind of, on the other hand, kind of the more dense, densifying kind of areas of the city? Is that, is that something that could kind of like someone could reasonably surmise?
Diana, I'll take a shot at it if you can help me out when I'm done. So I would say that there are design standards already in place in the precise plan areas that could, that address multifamily housing, that you have to have a certain architecture and design and window placement and recess of the facade and storefront and all of that. So you have that design direction and regulations for non-single-family housing. The residential design guidelines address single-family housing, but it's not as if there aren't other design guidelines, you know, in place. We just don't necessarily call them that.
Got it. But in theory, these specific residential design guidelines are, you know, more rigorous and detailed in some ways than the kind of the traditional guidelines that are already codified?
Well, I'll, I'm going to defer to Diana. The design guidelines specifically for the downtown precise plan that cover a lot of multifamily housing are very detailed.
Well, I don't want to take up too much time with this. I appreciate it. And I just really wanted to throw that as a kind of a point of consideration for everyone on the call, but I will go into my comments on your questions. So the first question, are there specific housing and planning strategies you want to prioritize? This should come as no surprise. Of course, I'd like to see policy as well as specifically around the housing element, but also development policy that focuses on very low and moderate housing development. And obviously, because we're a little trending behind in that respect. Definitely want to look very closely at the rezoning of R1, and I, I want to be very comprehensive about that. I think, you know, the Woodside Road corridor could be appropriate, but I want to look, you know, throughout the city, frankly. And I want to, you know, use framed factors, some of the framed factors that council member Espinoza Garnica mentioned, but other things as well. I'd also, of course, absolutely encourage, you know, the missing middle housing element. I want to actually thank members of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee who've been working on this for many years, as you correctly mentioned. So I'm really wanting to see a fulsome and thoughtful discussion around that. You know, in terms of the specific corridors for housing sites, as I've mentioned, I think that kind of the initial thought about Woodside Road kind of makes sense, but I, I want to see this in a more structured and rationalized way. And what I mean by that is I think that there should be kind of criteria factors that we're selecting. So for example, proximity to transit, age of structures, mitigation of environmental impact, and doing some kind of prioritization from there. I think spitballing it could create issues. So I definitely want to see, you know, definitely a rationalized approach. I'm sure you guys are already thinking about that. In terms of engagement, of course, online, I believe, should be prioritized, specifically social media, so we could get a very range of perspective, specifically from young folks who may not necessarily be getting the city's communications via email and so on and so forth. One thing that I think could be really interesting is having expert speakers or speakers of interest come to draw in disengaged audiences. So I know that a few cities had some really interesting speakers recently to talk about redlining in their communities, and it drew out, you know, hundreds of people. And I think that if we can somehow get a, you know, headline speaker, let's call it. Of course, you know, I understand budget is an issue, but trying to get something like that to get people into the door so that they can participate would be great. And in terms of environmental justice, you know, I want to second everything that, that council member Ready and Espinoza Garnica have mentioned about that. I would like to see parallel potentially policy that helps for low-income homeowners to pursue improvements that would make their neighborhoods more environmentally sustainable. I realize that that may not be a part of the housing element conversation specifically, but again, something that's on my mind. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, council member Smith. Council member G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard and Mr. Munzer. Ms. Odell, thank you for the presentation. This is a lot of hard work in front of you and very important work. And so however the council or however I can help, please let me know. Because this, this is really a lot of work. And the work, every city in the state of California, every community in the state of California has to do on the same timeline. So that's one of the constraints is just resources right there. Before I get into the questions, I just want to respond to council member Ready's question about Redwood Shores. It's, it's a little bit more, more than just zoning out here. I was on the phone, a group called me this morning. And one of the things that's different about Redwood Shores, it's, it is a master-planned community. This was a decision that the city council made back in the 60s. And as a master-planned community, many of the properties have deed restrictions through their CCNRs about the type of uses that can go on the properties. And so many of the properties along Twin Dolphin Drive have deed restrictions through CCNRs that limit, it doesn't matter what the zoning changes in the city, they're restricted by their deed as to what can be on that property. So it's a little bit more than just changing the zoning. With regards to the council questions, I know we're getting late and we have still more meetings to go through. One of the big priorities for question number one for me are going to be get strategies that help support our nonprofit housing developers in obtaining grants and holding on to them. And we know that over the next several years, there's going to be a number of different opportunities for our partners to compete for grants and tax credits. That needs to change to make the Bay Area more competitive. But the housing and planning strategy should be able to help our partners compete, hold on and deliver some of the housing that we've talked about, whether it be ELI, VLI, or low income. Those tax credits and those funding opportunities, both public and private, are going to be very, very important to that. With regard to number two, I'm a fan of developments that have mixes of uses that are created along transportation corridors. And so connecting number two with wherever transit is going to be is going to be critical. And if time allows later this evening, I hope that I will be able to report on some of the mega issues going on in the region about transit. And I know we have a Transportation Mobility Committee tomorrow, where at least I'll have a little bit more time maybe to share with the committee what's going on. One of the key things about the transit corridors and mixes of uses is that unfortunately with COVID, those transit quarters can adjust a little bit because of the low ridership that transit properties are facing. And so we need to make sure we preserve density bonuses where transit is today when applications are deemed complete and are accepted.
Council member G, I believe you have frozen. I don't know if you can hear me. You might need to log out and then log in again. Council member G. Okay, for the time being, I'd like to call on council members who haven't had a chance to speak yet. And then I will circle back to council members for additional questions. So my next speaker is council member Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Odell and Mr. Munzer for the presentation. We know this is a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. One of the things that I think we need to balance in our, our specific housing strategies and prioritize is as we think of new housing that is being developed or planned for, we also have to think of, and I know Diana, you mentioned this, displacement, Dan O'Dell. And so any new housing to me is very important that it takes into consideration that it's not displacing folks. That has to be a priority, because sometimes we find opportunities, but it is an issue of displacement. I'm, you know, I want to also thank the Housing and Human Concerns Committee for all the work that they've been doing on this issue. In order for us to improve the housing, we need to address the families and the people that are being jeopardized and are being displaced. I think that that to me is one of the main issues. Are there areas or specific corridors? I, you know, I agree that it would be nice to have them on transit corridors, but I don't think we should limit where we can do it. I think we need to be open and look at deed restrictions in the shores. You know, folks can benefit out there as well as in any of the areas in our city. As far as the additional planned engagement outreach effort, I think you've done a really good job. And you've also talked about doing translations and communication methods. But I would go to the nonprofits that we have that are serving a lot of those folks and, you know, have them set up meetings in different languages. Let's go to where they are, to where the folks are, instead of always inviting them to, if they have their nonprofit meetings, let's go to those meetings and make sure we have staff that can address their issues in their language. And, and I think that that would be the, all of those would be environmental justice elements that we, we want to prioritize if we're working with folks. And when I look at the information that you gave us, I, I still see, and missing middle is kind of a, it's not a very explained churn, is it? Is it the folks that just can't afford to live here even though they both work? And maybe that's where we start and then go down, because we've done a really good job with moderate and housing. We have, we've done really good in planning for that. And I think it's time that we look from moderate to low, very low, and extremely low. I think that should be one of our main focus. How do the RENA numbers that are imposed to us compare to the numbers that, and this is my, my final question, that compared to the Redwood City numbers? If we said, you know, we know that Redwood City needs, I think we have the 350 units that are expected, very low and so on. But how do they compare? Are they different? If we said, you know, we really need, according to our population, this number of units, is RENA above it? Is it below it? Do we think we can meet that? And if we can't, what, what, what are we going to do to make sure that we reach the numbers or reach the numbers that are important to us? So that would be my, my last question.
Thank you, council member Aguirre. If I may try to just respond to that question. For the most part, the RENA is the city's idea of what we should need in the next eight years. We don't really have an independent analysis separate from that. To, in terms of setting targets for very low, low or moderate. I think we appreciate council member Ready's interest in looking at extremely low-income units, and we can definitely look at policies and programs to try to address that, that group of community members. And I think that our target for this upcoming eight years is over 1,000 very low-income units. So that's going to be quite a challenge for us. And so I think really dedicating our resources to what we need to do to meet that need will, will be a big lift.
Thank you.
Council member G, you were cut off, and I wanted to know if you wanted to finish your train of thought.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And my apologies to my colleagues and to the public for being kicked out by my technology. Just to wrap up a couple of things real quickly, following on council member Aguirre's comment about community outreach, you really do need to go out to our communities and collaborate with trusted partners. And communications really need to be culturally appropriate for engagement. And so I really support that. With regard to, one other thought I have with regard to innovation, one of the big things is reducing the cost of construction. And there's a lot of innovation in the pipeline right now that we need to get ready for, whether that be prefabrication, modular construction, or mass timber. All those will play a role in reducing the cost of construction from $500,000 to $800,000 to $200,000 to $400,000 a year, which will help produce more housing at different income levels. So I think that will wrap things up. Other than with regard to outreach, I have been impressed with the Reimagine SAM Trans outreach program. And so there may be some elements or components that the city can borrow from that outreach effort that would be appropriate for Redwood City. Thank you, Mayor Howard. And again, my apologies for my technology.
No, no problem. Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you. This is such an important topic, and it's so hard to be rushed, but I want to be mindful of the time. I'm going to just kind of go through quickly and not expect too much of a reaction from staff unless they want to weigh in on something. But a few things that popped out, you know, one is I love, really like this idea of anchoring on community values, because the housing we built has to be about the values that we want to see living in our community. What do we care about? And so that's a great way. It really reminds me of our Home for All discussions that we had many years ago. Looking at the map, there was a map and it showed some green circles, and it said that we would need to go outside of those areas to fulfill our numbers this go-round. You know, what does that mean exactly? Does that mean that we're going to have to cast a wider net? That was a relatively small area. Does that mean we'd have to build higher to fulfill those numbers? I think we really need the council and the community to understand what that means so that they're not surprised when they see a variety of strategies being suggested in order to meet those needs. I think it'd be helpful to understand where the present pipeline of projects would fall into this. For example, the Gatekeeper projects that we're looking at, that total well over 1,000 units of housing, would that apply to these numbers? And I also think it's important that we understand as a community why RENA is different this time. You know, in times past, cities wouldn't meet their numbers and they would sort of just kind of get away with that. And it has very much changed this cycle. And so really understanding those details feels really important. A few comments, those were more of the questions. I really want to see us hit those moderate, low, and very low goals, because that is where we're really able to meet the needs of individuals in our community that are not being served. I really, I really want to second what council member G said about our strategies need to anchor on those nonprofit developers who are trying to make these deals work. So much of building that housing is a finance exercise. And so we need to understand early what it is they need, what tools do they need, what do they need from us so that they are unblocked and able to move forward as quickly as possible? I'd like to see us look at the work that the HHCC has already done on missing middle housing. My understanding is that it applied to R2 zoning and above. I'd love for us to understand that better as a council, so I think that should be a strategy that gets prioritized. I, I don't, you know, I don't like the language around banning residential zoning. But what I do want to see us do is have a dialogue around welcoming duplexes and triplexes across the city. I was raised in Wisconsin and nowhere, I can't think of it anywhere, the nicest neighborhoods had duplexes. And so I think that that's something that we could welcome into our neighborhoods and explore how that could work to achieve our goals. On engagement, I really think of education as a part of engagement and outreach. So seconding council member Smith's idea to partner with speakers, the Community Equity Collaborative did an amazing research project with the San Mateo County Historical Society. They looked at news clippings and meeting minutes, and they showed the history of redlining in our county and how that transpired and, and how race was a factor. And I would love to see us lean on community partners who are already doing this work to facilitate education and awareness in the community on the history of zoning. And I think that those two would probably be excellent partners as a starting point. And our historical society. And then on environmental justice, I think it would be helpful to look at each strategy based on it, how it'll help us achieve our greenhouse gas emission goals, so that we can sort of stack rank and understand where we would make the most impact. For example, I saw a report last year that showed how development along El Camino Real is actually most ideal for sea level rise mitigation, for fire prevention, and for greenhouse gas emissions. And we should be looking for those types of opportunities. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. I have two more hands. Council member Ready, you have your hand up.
I'm so sorry, I did not remove my hand.
Okay.
I will try to do that now.
And I see Mr. Jaw has his hand up. Do you wanted to add to the conversation, Mr. Jaw? Go ahead.
My apologies, Mayor. Accidentally raised a hand. Sorry about that.
I was giving you a chance. Okay. And then council member Espinoza Garnica.
Sorry, didn't say it earlier. Kind of got distracted when I was like making all my comments. But a lot of the council members, like Vice Mayor Hale and Aguirre, council member Aguirre mentioned what I was going to ask, the, my concerns being the extremely low, very low income housing being proportionally allocated. I wanted to ask more directly if it was possible, or if we could look into to see if it'd be helpful to also having a requirement for certain low, a level of housing that like, I know it changes, you know, how the RENA scores change, and so it might be changing with time. But you know, with like commercial development, we, we ask for about 15% of housing to be affordable. Can we ask that like, you know, at least like 5% be Can we ask that like, you know, at least like 5% be extremely low? Like, is this something that would be helpful? Does it defeat, does it not help the conversation? That was kind of my thought and the question I went through in last minute.
Who would like to answer that question? Ms. Odell? Or Ms. Lancaster?
Let me start and then I would love to have Ms. Lancaster add on to my answer. So these are all strategies that we can take a look at as part of this process in terms of what do we need to do to meet our city's goals? We can create specific requirements. We do have to look really carefully at, you know, the costs associated with that and looking at our overall strategies and what we need to do to meet our RENA. So I would say that there's more analysis that we would definitely want to do. But there are absolutely a variety of things that we can look at. And I don't know if Ms. Lancaster had any additional information.
I would agree with exactly what Mrs. Odell had mentioned, that this is something that we can look at. But it definitely would need to be studied further. And I see.
Mr. Munzer?
Some further comment. Sorry, I meant to time the raising of my hands. I just, because I've heard it a few times, just so the council and the community is aware, since people are watching clearly. You know, we have started reaching out to community groups already through our consultants, through our subconsultants, through city staff, through types of nonprofit and community organizations that haven't been brought in before. So I didn't want to leave, I, we greatly appreciate the comments, but I didn't want to leave the impression that that wasn't proactively occurring. And then also to address Vice Mayor Hale's comment. And I, clearly, yes. When we highlighted those areas that have seen the most residential development along El Camino, along Veterans and the downtown area. Yes, we are talking about looking at the city in totality. It includes potential greater density, potentially high in the downtown area. But it's, you know, this is a citywide exercise.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer. Okay, I'm going to go directly to questions for you so that we can get to public comment. I'm going to name things that haven't been already mentioned because there's been really, really good questions and suggestions from the council so far. What would we like to prioritize? I would like to say any future, any current or future projects that are going into the pipeline. We want them to address the jobs housing imbalance. I mean, make it just, put it out there. We say it with each project, but maybe we say that from now on, we're going to be asking each and every project. If you want to do something commercial or not non-housing, you have to address the jobs housing imbalance. And how you do that may be up to you. But I think we should have that part of, one of the things that we just put out there to each and every person coming before us. Regarding strategy, I want to be sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that the Bay Area Delta Plan, the Water Plan, is making some proposals that could jeopardize the ability for cities to produce a lot of housing. If they say, in fact, they're going to cut water allocations to cities, it's going to be very difficult to produce the numbers of housing units if we don't have water allocations. And our city has prided itself on always doing the studies before we built the housing or we built more development. So that's something that's going to have to be a priority. Do we have the water and additional resources to do what we want to do? And if we don't, what do we have to do to make sure we do? So that's a priority for me. I'm a big fan of preservation of affordable housing by either using, well, existing housing stock that's either affordable or housing stock that wants to get their, their facility or their residence up, you know, at a makeover. And in return, we get those commitments to affordability, deep affordability. I'm a big fan of that because we do have money for that. And it's so much less expensive than building new housing and we know that. So if we could look for areas of funding that maybe we need to be looking into to get some of our older apartment buildings throughout the city, and we have many, where we could really invest in them so we don't have to wait four to five years for new housing. We can get something done much quicker than that by prioritizing preservation of our existing housing stock. Number two, I think that's all been said. I do like the idea of addressing Woodside Road and looking at the caps for our downtown precise plan. We have the ability to do more housing downtown and that's something I would be interested in doing as well as throughout our community. Number three, the only thing I'd like to add is how maybe, how can we on a more regular basis have translation services for our non-English speaking speakers? To me, that's going to be vital. If we really want community engagement, we have to make sure that we are always available with those services. So people don't have to ask a special favor to get it done, that we're just going to be able to do it. And it may require some funding for that, but I think it's that important for our engagement purposes. And number four, I agree with everything Vice Mayor Hale said, so I won't go and add anything on to that. So I think I've answered those questions and I think that you've gotten a lot of information, Mr. Munzer. And I hope that was helpful.
It was very helpful. Thank you, Mayor Howard. Thank you, members of council. Certainly, again, you know, we're in the, yeah, we have a hard stop, but it's in January 2023. We will be back in addition to the other types of communications that we will, of course, be engaging in with the community and have other opportunities, of course, for your input.
Perfect. Now we're going to take public comment on the study session item. To see how many speakers we have, I ask anyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand now and keep it raised until your name is called to give your comments. I'll give it a minute for people to raise their hands, please. And this would be on the study session item only. There'll be opportunity for public comment at our regular meeting that will start after this study session. Okay, thank you. It looks like we have at this time six speakers. This will be the last call. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this item, can you please raise your hand? So we have six speakers and my last speaker is Rona Gundrum. And if anyone, after Rona Gundrum speaks, if anyone wants to add their comment, they can send it to council@redwoodcity.org. Okay, each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call your names in the order that the hands were raised, two at a time. And the timer will begin when you begin speaking. And it's okay if your comments are brief or you'd like to agree with the previous speaker. So my first speaker is Jeremy Smith, and thank you for your patience, Jeremy. My first speaker is Jeremy Smith and then Deborah Leschen.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you all of the council members. Amazing, amazing comments, seriously. So my name's Jeremy Smith and I'm a lifelong community member of Redwood City. While I'm also a resident, I say community member because that's the more important description to me. The Redwood City community is larger than just those who own homes within our city borders. And I'm glad it seems the council agrees that we should try to be as inclusive as possible in this process. Our community is made up of people from all walks of life. And I for one value the diverse perspectives, skills, attitudes, the hard work, the social support, the compassion to take care of our aging parents, the hope to create a better life for your children. All of that makes our community better. And I want more neighbors to contribute to this richness of community and to share that richness with. Building more housing is key to accommodating more neighbors and addressing the challenges now and to come. So where should we build the more housing? I think we should look to building more housing close to job opportunities, transit, quality services and places with less pollution burden and the best position to be resilient to our growing climate hazards. This includes places like where I live in Eagle Hill and Mount Carmel, where trees and parks help stave off harmful heat waves and high enough that sea level rise won't make flooding occur frequently. Right now, those areas aren't zoned for more housing. So what would our city be like without R1 zoning? It would be a place that's more inclusive, a place where young people and immigrants have more opportunities to live near where they work and climb the economic ladder or send their kids to great schools. It would be a beautiful place where there are more neighbors to say hi to from the sidewalks and from porches. It would be a place with less, with a less carbon footprint. I hope we will consider this kind of future for our city. I'd like to end about, by talking about the barriers to building affordable housing. Funding, who's paying for it? How can we make it easier to finance? Zoning, where can you build it? It's, is it equitable to not build multifamily affordable housing in areas of high opportunity? And then cost, how much does our permitting process increase the cost for affordable housing such as off-street parking requirements? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My next speaker is Deborah Leschen and then Pat W.
Oh, hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Deborah Leschen. My husband and I own a property on Sequoia Avenue. And I just want to urge the city to really protect tenants from eviction. I'm a high school teacher and I see the impact on our young people of worry about the economic insecurities of our time and the idea of these kids being out on the street is just alarming. And if, and I just really urge city council to help landlords to apply for all of the programs available that pay 80% of past due rent for tenants. And just let's keep everyone in their housing. Affordable housing is so important and our history of redlining and all of that is a real social justice issue. And I agree with the last speaker on the need for that. But really, this is a win-win situation if we can keep people in stable housing and just do it for the kids, do it for our neighbors. And that's all I have about that. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Pat W. and then S V Leeds.
Thank you, members of the city council. I don't understand the obsession that a council member has with land speculation. This isn't the mid 19th century when people bought vast acreage of land speculating that the railroad would come through, which is how they then took advantage of the rise in real estate sales. Give it a rest. I'm looking for, forward to purchasing my parents' home in Oregon as they seek now to move to assisted living. Preventing me from buying out of state property is a violation of the U.S. Constitution. Also prevents me to, from taking advantage of the normal federal income taxes gained from renting my current place in Redwood City and moving to the home that I buy in Eugene. I don't need to be punished for gaining equity in my current home, nor do Latin American folks who buy homes in Redwood City and someday sell them for a higher price and also move to less expensive places to spend their retirement and have enough money in the bank so that they don't go bankrupt at the age of 90. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is S V Leeds and then Elon Shine, Shine Man.
Hi there, this is Kelsey Baines. I apologize, I'm not in the correct Zoom account. But I want to start by thanking staff and the council for all the hard work and leadership in creating more homes and more housing opportunities for people. I want to also second Jeremy Smith's very eloquent comments and just say that I support more homes for more neighbors of all incomes and abilities. And also would encourage you to lift the downtown residential cap in addition to expanding study areas for higher density housing. I'm also going to encourage you to look at a couple other cities as policy models for missing middle housing and for very low income housing development. First, I would encourage you to look at Portland as a model for missing middle. Portland legalized fourplexes citywide and gave more square footage to triplexes and quadplexes. They also did something where they gave less square footage to oneplexes to avoid getting a bunch of McMansions with the additional square footage for triplexes and quadplexes. They also allowed even larger units, up to six units, if half of them were affordable. So you can imagine something like the triple deckers in Boston being allowed if half of the units are affordable. The other city I would encourage you to look at is Cambridge. So Cambridge did a really great affordable housing overlay that allows for larger buildings for 100% affordable housing as well as streamlined approval for affordable housing. And finally, I just want to encourage you to enact really strong anti-displacement policies. Maybe something like making the SB 330 protections permanent. And I also just had a question about affirmatively furthering fair housing. Is that the same as environmental justice? Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Elon Shine Man and then Rona Gundrum is my last speaker.
Yeah, hi, this is Elon Shine Man. I'm actually a member of the HHCC. Thank you, Mayor Howard and council for taking the time to look at the housing element and taking my comments. Mainly what I want to do is amplify Mayor Howard, your comments on the preservation issue. I think you were just about the only one to bring it up and I think it's an important issue. There's more, there's more around preservation than cosmetically cleaning up some of our older building stock. More benefits, I should say. This stock probably holds most of our low income residents. This building stock also is at most at risk for soft story, earthquake safety. And another thing I think we should look at in our older building stock and some of our smaller building stock is related to environmental equity is also indoor air quality. There's growing amount, a growing evidence showing that indoor air quality is just as dangerous and maybe even more so than outdoor air quality and results in higher asthma and other, and other diseases. So again, I would like to double down on this, this idea of looking at innovative ways to preserve our older building stock and truly doing deep, deep retrofits of that stock. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. And my last speaker is Rona Gundrum.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard and city council. I also agree with the previous speaker and your thoughts, Mayor Howard, on preservation of using existing housing stock and older apartment buildings. I've seen quite a bit of that in some other areas more to the west. I also want to, I agree with Councilmember G about looking at other types of construction, some prefab. I've seen some, you know, buildings go up relatively quickly and they're well constructed and affordable. So I think that's an important thing to look at. I also want to bring up perhaps areas to look at building into other communities, other areas around here even are turning some of the malls into mixed use. So for instance, the old Toys R Us and Kohl's Mall, that might be a, a good area to look at, creating some mixed use. And also expanding out maybe toward Bay Road out by the Redwood City Post Office. But we would need to bring transportation to those areas on the fringes. And I think that whatever building is done, there should definitely be a look at creating green spaces for people to get out and enjoy open air and green spaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your comments. If you were not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the city council. Thank you all for your comments. If you were not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the City Council at council@redwoodcity.org. We will begin our regular City Council meeting after a brief ten minute recess or seven forty P M. You may stay in this Zoom session to attend the meeting. Thank you all for your patience and we are adjourned from this study session. Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you for tuning in to our virtual City Council meeting tonight as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID nineteen. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I want to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the meeting. All public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest and items not on tonight's agenda will be taken at one time during item number five. Comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. And please keep your hand raised until your name is called to give your comments. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Councilmembers Aguirre Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N dash twenty nine dash twenty. The City Council chambers will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on a stown broadband cable channel twenty six Comcast cable channel twenty seven A T and T U verse channel ninety nine and streamed live via the city's website at www dot redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when City Council members, city staff and guest presenters are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties. I'd now like to ask the city clerk if she will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Good evening. Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Smith if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Of course, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Moving on to item number four. Presentations and acknowledgements. This is a wonderful one. We're going to be giving a proclamation recognizing professional municipal clerk week. Tonight, we're recognizing our city staff that play a vital role in facilitating our City Council meetings and in overall local government operations. May second through May eighth, twenty twenty one is recognized as professional municipal clerk week. And on behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank and acknowledge City Clerk Pamela Aguilar and her team for all their support to the City Council and to the Redwood City Organization. Pam, it is my honor to present you with tonight's proclamation, which reads, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. And whereas the week of May second through May eighth, twenty twenty one is municipal clerk week, we are honoring and showing our appreciation to our professional municipal city clerk Pamela Aguilar and our professional municipal assistant city clerk Jessica Dominguez. And now therefore be resolved that I Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of our City Council and the people of Redwood City do hereby proclaim May second through May eighth, twenty twenty one as professional municipal clerks week and further appreciation to our professional municipal city clerk Pamela Aguilar and our professional municipal assistant city clerk Jessica Dominguez and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I will now like to ask City Clerk Pamela Aguilar if she would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard and City Council members for recognizing municipal clerks week. I am very grateful that you have issued this proclamation recognizing the work of all city clerks out there for supporting their respective city councils, city organizations, and most importantly, the communities that we serve. I'm confident that if you ask any city clerk, they will tell you that they love their job and specifically give utmost importance to what our role represents, which is to be that connection between the community and its elected body, providing transparency to the legislative process, access to public information, among many other duties. It has been my pleasure to serve as Redwood City City Clerk up to now under the leadership of the City Council and of our, under the leadership of our city manager. However, no one can accomplish anything on their own. And I do have a very talented and dedicated team that supports me and I want to name them now. Jessica Dominguez, our assistant city clerk, Kimberly Daniel, our management analyst and Roger Hardy, our administrative clerk. I want to acknowledge and express my gratitude to them as well. Tonight, I also want to give a special thanks to Roger Hardy as he has recently announced his retirement. And we cannot let him go without saying thank you for the ten years of service he has given to the city of Redwood City. Roger always provides such pleasant and courteous assistance to the council, the public, B C C members and staff. In addition, whenever our office receives requests to hunt down obscure documents or resolutions or agreements from decades past, Roger always has a knack for locating them. That is definitely one of his strengths. I want to wish Roger the very best in his well deserved retirement. And again, I want to thank you so very much, City Council, for honoring municipal clerks week. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And on behalf of the council, again, thank you to Ms. Aguilar and your very capable team. And I also want to say, Roger, good luck in your next journey. I will miss your sweet smile every time I came to the clerk's office. Thank you so much. We were very pleased to be able to offer this proclamation for you today. So as we begin the meeting, I'd like to make three announcements. First, we plan to consider regulations on accessory dwelling units in May, not this evening. You may check our city website to confirm whether this will be discussed May tenth or May twenty fourth. Second, item six J regarding City Council meeting management will be pulled from the consent calendar this evening and heard after all other consent items are voted on. Finally, I wanted to acknowledge that this continues to be a challenging time for many in our community. I want to firmly state that we condemn all manifestations or expressions of racism, xenophobia, discrimination, scapegoating and ethnic or religious intolerance, not only in Redwood City, but throughout the nation. We stand in solidarity with all who have suffered at the hands of senseless violence and hate. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We also know that we we also know that we can't solve longstanding issues overnight. But we are making positive change together. Last Thursday, April twenty second, we had a hundred people.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but the interpreter, the interpreters Mike is is coming into yours and so something needs to be done to correct that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. I was noticing that. Is there something that we can do for to make sure that people can hear the interpreter, but also that I can speak without interrupting her or vice versa?
I, I, sorry, this is the interpreter. I think it's the, hi, good afternoon. I believe there's a problem. Let me, I'll, I'll, I'll log out and then I'll log back. I think
I hear an echoing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me.
Okay, I'll just finish up this comment. Last Thursday, April twenty second, we had a hundred people attend an online community meeting on our public safety department operations and budgets. A recording of the meeting has been posted to the website in case anyone else would like to watch it. Our acting fire chief, Dave Pucci and Police Chief Dan Mulholland each presented a very informative description of their department operations, budget, workforce, challenges and accomplishments, followed by plenty of time for question and answers with the community. This conversation was an important early step in reimagining services. I know we have a great deal of work ahead of us in reimagining city services, particularly with respect to public safety. So thank you to all the members of the community who continue to bring forward such thoughtful and constructive questions as we plan for the work ahead. I'm hoping now that we are able to get Ms. Martinez back so that I know she was offering to provide interpretive services for us today. And while we're waiting for that, we'll start with item five, which is public comment on the consent calendar on matters of council interest and on items that are not on the agenda. At this time, we'll take public comment on items not on the consent, excuse me, that are on the consent calendar on matters of council interest. And on items not on the agenda. Item six J has been pulled from consent and will be considered after all other consent calendar items are addressed. If you have a comment on this item six J, you may speak to it now. If you wish to make public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized and please keep your hand raised until your name is called to give your comment. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. I'd now like to ask our city clerk. She has a comment at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. We do have a Spanish translator assisting us tonight. And at this time, we would like to ask her to provide the instructions to those who have requested Spanish translation for this portion of the meeting for public comment. Ms. Martinez.
Okay, in order to see how many speakers we have for general public comment, I'd like to ask anyone who wishes to speak on a consent calendar item, matters of council interest or an item not on the agenda, please or item, I think it's J six J. Please raise your hand now and keep it raised until your name is called to give public comment. At this time, I have eighteen hands raised. We now have twenty three hands raised. I'll give it another few seconds. There were twenty four and now twenty three. I'm going to wrap it up in a couple of seconds. Okay, at this time, we have twenty four speakers. And my last speaker is Fabiola. And she will be the last speaker that I I call. And anyone after that who would like to have information for the council, please, you can email it to council@redwoodcity.org. Each speaker will receive two minutes. I'll call your names in the order that hands were raised, two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking and it's okay for your comments to be brief. And it's okay to state that you agree with the previous speaker. Our first speaker is Tanya and our second speaker is Lisa Hicks Dumansky.
Hello, Councilmembers. I am Tanya Soleil, a resident of Dock Town. This weekend, I sent you an email regarding my stringent opposition to the changes proposed under agenda item six J. I oppose moving the starting time to six P M. For most people, that is dinner time. I oppose reducing the time for public comment to two minutes. As I explained in my email, public comment not only serves to inform you, the council, but also us, the public, who strive to understand not just final yes, no votes, but the why of these votes. While some issues are clear, most are not. Understanding the why is critical to building consensus and buy in for decisions that the council ultimately makes. I would also offer that, given that the last year, according to the staff report, has seen participation increase from four hundred and twenty five speakers in twenty nineteen to eighty eight hundred eighty two speakers in twenty twenty, reducing incentives for participation are the very opposite of what you, the council, have said you wanted. The measures you are considering approving today will result in a reduction in participation. Finally, I should note that the staff report also states that no other local city starts their meetings at six P M. While normally the city is unwilling to be a leader regarding items that would benefit the community, when it comes to things that are detrimental to the community, it appears to be full steam ahead. In conclusion, please remove this item from current and future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Lisa Hicks Dumansky and then Ian.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Hicks Dumansky and I live in Red, or I've lived in Redwood City for almost sixty years. And I worship at Woodside Road United Methodist Church, also in Redwood City. And I'm a leader with faith in action, Ba- And I'm a leader with Faith in Action Bay Area. I've lived in the Palm Park neighborhood of Redwood City with my family for the last 23 years. I also work in Redwood City. I am the Executive Director of the Redwood City Library Foundation. So my work is also anchored in the local community. We're all trying to address the inequities in our community after a year of the pandemic. And one real way to do this would be to protect Redwood City families from eviction. I am blessed to be a homeowner, and I would like to see that sense of security extend to everyone in our community. Honorable mayor and council members, our community is facing extreme housing insecurity, which will only worsen as the state programs and laws expire. We ask that you commit to advancing all five points of the Faith in Action Community Proposal that I think has been sent on ahead in order to keep our families safe and at home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ian, and then Johanna Rasmussen.
Hello. So two things. First off, I want to support what the speaker before me said and also point out that at a meeting last week, a statistic was provided that 55% of Redwood City residents are renters. So I think that's something that needs to be kept in mind as policies are being set. Second, I want to express my concern about item 6J on the consent agenda, specifically the move to permanently shorten public comments. Depending on the issue, it can be hard enough to fit a comment into three minutes, particularly on a nuanced topic if there are multiple points to address, such as right now when I'm having to rush, or if there are a lot, or if there's a lot of data to cover. And while, yes, longer comments can be mailed in, there's no guarantee that the council will take the time or even have the time to read all of the mailed comments before taking a vote. Public comments at these council meetings are often the only opportunity that members of the community have to weigh in on issues in a public forum before the council votes. And while the shift to Zoom meeting participation has made these meetings more accessible overall, over the last year, rules for public comment have been getting more and more restrictive. First, you took away the basic ability to see who was in the meeting and who had their hands raised for comments. Then you took away the ability to continue getting in line for comments while public comment was going on. Quite often, a person might not have anything to say at first, but might end up wanting to respond to something that was said in another comment and want to get in line at that point, which they used to be able to do, but can't anymore. And now, as part of this procedural cleanup, public comments are being shortened. This isn't good government. The council should be looking for ways to expand public participation in our government and make policy more reflective of the community's will not to restrict public access and keep the public from being able to voice disagreement or offer feedback on what our elected officials are doing in our name. For the sake of good government and just basic common sense, please strike that change and don't silence the very people whose needs you're supposed to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Johanna Rasmussen, and then Nanny Friedman.
Good evening. Thank you, Johanna Rasmussen, Farm Hill Neighborhood Association. I have submitted comments, written comments, on item 6J. So I'd like to use this time to give the community an update on the Palencia Velazquez family that I mentioned during our last city council meeting. 4 o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, April 10, the Palencia Velazquez family, longtime residents of Redwood City, were catastrophically injured in Sonoma County. They were struck by a drunk driver who had a prior DUI conviction, who was driving a stolen vehicle without a license, without insurance, and he plowed into them going 70 miles an hour and attempted to flee the scene, only stopping when his vehicle became disabled. On April 11, we put out a community call in Redwood City asking for help for the family. Since this time, we've raised $128,000 to help the family with their medical bills. And tomorrow, we'll be submitting 1,351 signatures from residents of Sonoma County and Redwood City to the Sonoma County Superior Court requesting a bail increase in this case. The Palencia Velazquez family has, their journey of recovery has just begun and their lives are no doubt changed forever. It's been 16 days since the accident, and three of the four family members remain hospitalized. I just want to say that I'm grateful to Councilmembers Ready, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, former Mayor Ian Bane, Senator Josh Becker, and to every community member who has stepped up, offered prayers, offered your help, and is standing with us as we help this family. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Nanny Friedman, and then Barbara Valley.
Hello, my name is Nanny Friedman. I'm a graduate of Sequoia High School, and I currently work in Redwood City at Faith in Action Bay Area. Over the past year, we have seen how the crisis of the pandemic has exposed so many forms of inequality, and we know inequality along the lines of race and class, to be true. What we are talking about today as leaders of Faith in Action is not inequality as an idea or abstract concept, but how we can take the tangible, necessary steps as a city to ensure that all residents of Redwood City can recover from this pandemic, and how we can make sure that no resident of this city is left behind in June and July while residents with more resources, quote unquote, return to normal. Without intervention, we face a mass eviction crisis and the creation of a new underclass of residents in poverty who are burdened with $10, $20, or $50,000 of debt. We emailed you earlier today our community proposal to keep Redwood City families in their homes. And what we are asking you to do today is to commit individually and as a council to advancing the five tangible steps to ensure Redwood City's families can stay here in this city. The first is passing a resolution encouraging that the state extend eviction protections. Second, prepare to pass an eviction moratorium at the city level in the event that the state fails to act. Third, pass a resolution encouraging all landlords to apply to the state rent relief program and denouncing verbal harassment of tenants. Four, council members and staff should conduct outreach conversations to landlords. Five, if federal guidelines allow, Redwood City should use the $18 million of federal money it recently received for rental assistance. We will be happy to provide sample resolution and ordinance language, and we hope that you will work with Faith in Action leaders to implement these crucial measures. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Barbara Valley, and then Katie Getz.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. This is Barbara Valley. I'm a 50-year resident of Redwood City. I served on the library board in the past, currently serving on the Senior Affairs Commission, and I'm the chairman of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association. Tonight, though, I am speaking to you simply as Barbara Valley, resident of Redwood City. The Current Guide to the City Council Communications and Business says the consent calendar includes those managers, those matters, that the city manager in consultation with the mayor and vice mayor deems to be of a routine nature and can be enacted by one motion and one vote, is limiting public speech at meetings now to be considered routine, is limiting the number of people allowed to speak on an item next. While I'm interested in council members' discussion of an item, with one glaring exception, I am more interested in hearing what my fellow residents think. Over the years, I have spoken at council meetings on a variety of subjects. At times, I've had to limit my three-minute speech to two minutes, editing while sitting in council chambers. At the last council meeting, after waiting more than three and a half hours to address council on the hazard pay ordinance, when opening public comment, the announcement was made that comments would be limited to one minute. That's unacceptable. Participation in council meetings has increased substantially, as evidenced by the number of public speakers referenced in the staff report. Most of that increase is due to the introduction of virtual meetings, making it much easier for residents to attend. I do hope these virtual meetings will continue when we return to chamber meetings. And this increase in citizen engagement is not limited. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Katie Getz, and then Jim Recker.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council. My name is Reverend Katie Getz, and I serve as pastor of Woodside Road United Methodist Church here in Redwood City. And I am also a Redwood City resident of these last 12 years. In addition to that, I am a member of Faith in Action and Peninsula Solidarity Cohort. I come to you tonight to encourage you to follow through on those five points that Nanny brought up earlier. We in Redwood City have declared ourselves to be a welcoming city. We are a place where everyone has a, belongs, and everyone has a home. But people only have a home if we protect them from eviction. People only have a home if we partner with tenants and landlords to make sure that federal money made available for rent relief is actually used. People only have a home if we use the resources we've been given by the federal government to protect tenants. People only have a home if we extend eviction moratoriums. If we want our children to thrive in schools, if we want our workers and seniors and all sorts of residents to be able to continue to call Redwood City home, we need to put all effort into protecting those homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Getz. My next speaker is Jim Recker, and then Ryanne.
Good morning, good morning, good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council. My name is Jim Recker. I'm part of the Redwood City Qantas Farmers Market team, and I'm providing tonight some good news about our 2021 season. For those of you who don't know, the Redwood City Qantas Farmers Market is the oldest farmers market on the peninsula. It was conceived in 1979 by four community-oriented individuals led by Dr. John Hensel, with the intention of supporting local independent farmers and supplying the community with fresh produce. Last year was a difficult one. We decided not to open during the pandemic, and we lost our leader for many years, Caroline McHenry. But I'm pleased to announce that the Redwood City Qantas Farmers Market will be opening the 2021 season on May 1, which is this Saturday. We will be on the 500 block of Arguello Street, starting at 8:00 AM and going until noon. We have some additional market information and details, and you can find those on Facebook, looking us under Redwood City Qantas Farmers Markets. We'll have probably 14 vendors showing up on Saturday, and we expect to sign up more over the season. In regards to COVID-19 protocol, we will be following the COVID-19 protocols, and we'll be reminding all who attend the farmers market to support our efforts by keeping everyone safe. We'll have signage and information as you show up at the markets. Want to thank Mayor Howard and the City Council for its support, and we want to offer special thanks to Alex Kojikian, Assistant City Manager, Simon Wong, Economic Development Manager, Christian Hammack, Parking and TDM Manager, and Ken Cochrane, Administrative Division of the Redwood City Police Department. And that ends my presentation. We hope to see you all down at the Farmers Market this Saturday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is good news. My next speaker is Ryanne, and then Tovis Page.
Hello, my name is Ryanne, and I am a community member who has lived, worked, and gone to school in Redwood City for more than half my life. I agree with the speakers before me from Faith in Action, such as Nanny Freeman, as well as Ian, who pointed out how many of Redwood City folks are renters. Housing insecurity is a problem for me personally, as well as my community, and this problem will only worsen as state programs and laws expire. First, Redwood City must protect tenants from eviction. This means the city must approve a resolution in support of the state of California extending the moratorium at the state level. Additionally, the city must commit to and prepare to pass an eviction moratorium at the city level in the event that the state fails to act. And this eviction moratorium must take effect by July 1 in order to protect members of our community from eviction. In addition to utilizing eviction moratoriums, Redwood City must address the rental debt crisis in Redwood City. Faith in Action members have prepared a detailed community proposal for the city to follow in order to do this, and I support that proposal. One more thing to point out, I see that on the consent calendar, item 6J, the council will be considering reducing public comment time from three minutes to two. I believe that is unfair, especially since so many changes have already been made to reduce public engagement during these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Tovis Page, and then Anna Dagum.
Good evening. My name is Tovis Page. I'm a Redwood City homeowner and a member of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Redwood City. I'm also a seminarian, a member of Faith in Action Bay Area, and the Program Coordinator for the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort, which is a network of interfaith clergy and religious leaders working for compassion and belonging in San Mateo County. The past 14 months have been difficult for all of us. We are all desperate for things to return to some semblance of normal, but we know that rushing too fast to try to return to normal endangers our communities on so many levels. If kids have been slowly transitioning back to in-person school, we see that this transition is going to take time, support, and care. We can't rush it, and we can't leave anyone behind. Just as this is true for our kids, it is also true for residents who cannot pay rent due to COVID-related loss of income. Thousands of families are at risk of eviction and homelessness unless state or local government acts to prevent the looming crisis. We are not yet at the point of being able to say to our neighbors who rent their homes, "Okay, back to normal, rent's due," or "You're out." It's going to take time for people who have lost jobs to find employment again and to save up for rent and accumulated debt. And in the meantime, it is incumbent upon us as a community to make sure they remain safely housed and to support landlords in applying for assistance as we all transition together into a livable future. One of the lessons I believe we can take away from this pandemic is that we really are deeply interdependent. Now is the time for us to create public policies and programs that reflect this interdependence, starting with a Redwood City resolution to support an extension of the eviction moratorium at the state level and a commitment to pass a moratorium on the city level should the state fail to act. We've come this far together. Let's not stop now. Please support Faith in Action Bay Area's five-point community. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker, Anna Dagum, and then Clara Jackal.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Dagum, and I grew up in Redwood City. I am a Sequoia High School alum, and I am registered to vote in District 7. Tonight, I just want to urge the city to first and foremost protect tenants in our community from eviction by adopting all five points of the Faith in Action Community Proposal. And I also want to encourage the city to provide Spanish translation for all future city council meetings. Thank you for your time, and I trust that council members will listen to the community and do everything in their power to keep us in our homes, not just during this pandemic, but as we move into the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Clara Jackal, and then Pamela Ehrlich.
Hi, yeah, thank you. I wanted to comment on a few different items tonight. First, even though some of the restrictions of pandemic are being lifted, those who have lost their jobs and income are far from having recovered everything that they lost, as we've heard. Since stable housing is key to public health and public safety, as well as residents' personal well-being, I strongly support all five points of the community proposal laid out by Faith in Action leaders, and I urge you to pass them, including an eviction moratorium at the city level and expanding rental assistance programs to secure the homes of residents who have been hardest hit. Next, regarding item 6J, I join others in urging you not to shorten public comment time preemptively. It's been clear that that's been able to be done on the fly when necessary, and I think it's not a good idea to do that permanently. Also, I ask you to continue providing a way to attend city council meetings virtually, even after US council members might go back to meeting in person at City Hall at some point in the not-too-distant future. That all, having a virtual option still available, will be important for allowing meaningful public participation. And finally, I wanted to express support once more for the hazard pay ordinance for grocery and drugstore workers and item 6N, and thank you for taking this up. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Pamela Ehrlich, and then caller user one.
Hello, my name is Pamela Ehrlich, and I'm a congregant at Congregation Beth Jacob in Redwood City and a parent of a child at Sequoia High School on Redwood City. And I'm a community leader with Faith in Action. Over the course of the pandemic, I have stayed active in my volunteer role with the Family Center at Sequoia High School. The Family Center provides support for many of our immigrant families at the school and low-income families in general. And I'm keenly aware of the stress and decline in well-being among the families who are struggling due to COVID restrictions in terms of work and illness as well, struggling to feed their families and pay their rent debts and all the associated debts that they've accrued over the past year and a half. Additionally, through my Additionally, through my work with impacted Latinx leaders and Faith in Action, I am also aware of the extreme housing instability in our community. And honorable mayor and council members, our community is suffering. We all suffer when any of us suffer. And I encourage you to commit to advance all five points of the Faith in Action Community Proposal in order to keep our families safe at home and really increase the well-being of all of us in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is caller user 1 and then DSA line 6.
Hi, good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Marcelina Luna, a resident of Redwood City. And I also want to agree with every previous speaker that has mentioned everything about what we're facing in the middle of COVID and people losing their homes. So hopefully, the city will act and make sure that everyone who lives in our city is protected. In addition to that, I do also want to make another comment on the Consent Calendar Agenda item 6J of reducing our public speaking to two minutes instead of three. By the city council reducing public comments to two minutes, you are reducing public engagement opportunities. And completion of city business is to listen to your constituents. With increased community participation, as in the study session indicates, in our local politics, this is nothing more than community input suppression. So I'm asking you to please do not remove our three minutes allotted, which is not very much time, as someone mentioned earlier, when there's different topics to cover or points to get across or hear other people speak on different topics. The community already sees how by putting items on the consent calendar, the city manager can sneak it by the public. And this way, the council will vote on 7-0, and to me, that's a violation of everything that Redwood City stands for. So I really ask you to reconsider item 6J. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker, DSA line 6, and then Emil.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. I am Brandon Enriquez. I am the co-chair and member of Silicon Valley DSA, and I want to speak in favor of Faith in Action's five-point proposal plan to protect our most vulnerable communities of renters, who are a majority of Hispanic and Latino/Latinx community. As you have heard, the eviction moratorium is ending soon, and we, DSA and Faith in Action, call upon the city of Redwood City to enact another moratorium at the city level to protect our renters. We at DSA believe that housing is a human right and is healthcare, and during a pandemic where many of our most vulnerable are in a very tough and dire situation to pay rent or pay living expenses during a pandemic and costed medical bills, I also call on the city council to enact a or to reexamine our tenant protections that we currently have. As we've heard in the past, from tenants before, our current tenant protections have a lot of loopholes and failed to protect our renters from unjust evictions as many landlords were just able to hike up the price to force evictions through monetary gains. And lastly, I also approve previous commenters to not limit public comments. I believe this disengages the public, and we need our meetings to be more susceptible for all. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker, Emil, and then Pat W.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'd also like to add my support in Faith in Action's community proposal to keep Redwood City families at home. As previous speakers mentioned, there is a looming eviction crisis, and we must do what we can to keep our fellow residents safe and at home. I'd also like to speak about the proposal to shorten comment time to two minutes. Reports from previous public listening sessions have shown that residents are concerned that public officials are not listening to them. And this request to shorten public comment time only will grow the sense of mistrust. Not only is this confirming to residents that you are not listening to them, you are also confirming that you don't care about their concerns or you do not want to give them an opportunity to provide meaningful feedback. There are many ways the city council can improve the organization and cadence of these meetings. For example, I am very pleased to see our members using their videos this session, but this proposal to shorten comment time is a step backward. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Pat W. and then Michael Solario.
Hello, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I would like the city council to consider, along with its RHNA plans, to establish a limit for the number of square footage of office space that can be approved each year. And I emphasize the word "that can be approved" because there may come times when a builder will want to get approval for a structure, but you cannot approve it in that year because you have reached the limit of your approvals. Secondly, I agree with the comments about the virtual meeting in particular. These virtual meetings should continue until driving downtown to attend Redwood City Council meetings in purpose. Reverses rather increases air pollution versus global warming instead of increasing global warming, something that's not likely to occur anytime soon. Finally, I agree with every commentator about your two-minute limit. Frankly, that is the least amount of time that anyone can say anything of substance at these meetings that's comprehensible and backed by any factual information they want to provide. Further, while I love hearing you all speak, your lovely voices are so wonderful that you only hear me and the rest of these members for two minutes, but we get to hear you for three or four or five hours a night. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michael Solario and then Nina.
Hi, my name is Michael Solario, and I work and live in Redwood City. I live in District 6. And first, I want to thank you all for hearing this out. We got a lot of people commenting, so thanks for your patience and thanks for paying attention to us. So in the name of equity and serving marginalized communities, I'm urging you to fully support the community proposal to expand eviction protections and to take action against the mass debt and housing insecurity. This is a crucial step in reimagining city services and recognizing that the increase of housing security alleviates poverty and therefore decreases crime. This is not just a housing issue. This is a public safety issue. And since housing insecurity follows racial lines, this is an equity issue. I look forward to your support of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Nina and then Abby Taylor.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nina Rosenbaum, and I graduated from Sequoia High School, and I've lived in San Mateo County for all my life. I'm a leader with Faith in Action Bay Area, and I work in housing services. And every day, I help low-income immigrant tenants navigate rental relief programs, all of which ourselves are insufficient to deliver debt relief that is desperately needed by June 30th. In order to prevent more displacement, Redwood City must take further action to lift up the dignity of all tenants. I'm here to demand that Redwood City approve a resolution encouraging all landlords to apply to the program and announce the increase in verbal harassment that many tenants have been facing. I continue to witness entire buildings of residents where their landlords come to knock on their doors daily to verbally try to kick them out without following any legal process and take advantage of tenants that don't know their rights, often due to their limited English proficiency or their literacy. This is illegal, and it should not be tolerated under any circumstances, so it is crucial that action is taken. And that's why I'm asking Redwood City Council members that they outreach to landlords to encourage them to apply to the statewide program, because in many cases, they tell residents that they refuse and demand that they finance the rent through their own means in an effort to get these tenants to leave. I'm also demanding more expansive rental assistance programs to fully support residents whose landlords are not willing to apply, to residents that do not have lease agreements, such as those living and renting a room or those without access to the internet. These barriers are incredibly common and should never be the reason that a community member lose their home and their stability. Please protect our most vulnerable tenants with more compassion and dignity than the minimal and hard-to-access options that currently exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Abby Taylor and then Adriana Guzman.
Hi, my name is Abby Taylor, and I'm an organizer with Faith in Action Bay Area. Throughout the pandemic, we have heard countless stories of people whose lives have been impacted immensely by COVID-19 in a way that will persist even after some might think we've gone back to normal. To many in our community, July and late summer is not a time of greater freedom and hope, but holds great fear as it signals that protections are being stripped away. As a community, it is our responsibility to keep our families healthy and stable in their homes. We cannot allow a wave of evictions to overhaul so many of the families and individuals that make Redwood City what it is. Honorable mayor and council members, we ask that you commit to either passing a resolution in support of the state extending an eviction moratorium, or if they fail to protect the vulnerable in our community, to stand up for those at risk and pass an eviction moratorium at the city level by July 1st. Please do your job as public servants and keep our families safe and at home by passing the community proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Adriana Guzman and then the Reverend Leon Stanford.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Adriana Guzman, y estoy aquí con 13 personas más que quieren compartir su experiencia porque realmente estamos preocupados por lo, no solo lo que han pasado ya las personas durante la pandemia, pero por lo que estamos enfrentando en julio primero. Y ellos van a compartir su testimonio y van a pedirle que, por favor, aprueben también esta propuesta comunitaria que les hemos presentado y enviado hoy por email a todos ustedes porque realmente necesitamos trabajar juntos para mantener a nuestras familias saludables en sus hogares y con una oportunidad de seguir adelante en la ciudad de Redwood City. Nuestro primer líder es Nieves Pacheco, y nuestro último líder que va a compartir es Trinidad Villa Gómez.
Muy buenas noches, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Nieves Pacheco. Vivo en la ciudad de Redwood City por 33 años. Pertenezco a Fe en Acción y acudo a la iglesia San Antonio en Menlo Park. Yo soy una de cientos de familias que tenemos a deuda, así como hemos enfrentado la pérdida de trabajo. También hemos enfrentado la pérdida de salud, por tanto estrés, por tanto acoso de nuestros arrendatarios, y no sabemos qué vamos a hacer a partir de que se termine el moratorio. Yo creo que juntos podemos sobrepasar esta pandemia, y creo que los valores de nuestra ciudad se deben reflejar aún más en este momento para superar juntos esta pandemia y reconstruir nuestra economía juntos. Por eso estoy aquí pidiéndoles y quiero que apoyen la propuesta comunitaria que se les envió el día de hoy para mantener a nuestra comunidad en una vivienda estable y saludable. Muchísimas gracias, miembros del consejo.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ernestina Colín. Y lo que a mí me preocupa es que no tengo trabajo, es muy alto el pago de la renta, no tengo seguridad para tener un trabajo, y a mi dueña no quiere aplicar para la ayuda estatal. Y me preocupa, me entristece fuertemente de pensar que yo y mis hijos y esposo vayamos a ser echados a la calle. No me siento segura de decir mi casa, mi hogar, no hay seguridad. Moralmente, estamos mal bastante preocupados. Por favor, apoyen la propuesta comunitaria que les presentamos hoy. Por eso estoy aquí para pedir a aprobar una moratoria de desalojo a partir del 1st de julio para proteger a miles de inquilinos del desalojo hoy. Gracias por su apoyo.
Buenas tardes, miembros de Cortejo. Mi nombre es Amelia Garibay. Vivo aquí en Redwood City por 40 años. Soy líder de Fe en Acción, de Unión de Vecinos, y pertenezco a la iglesia San Antonio. Lo que a mí me preocupa es que hemos ido a tocar puertas y he escuchado muchas preocupaciones de las personas que están pasando por los desalojos. Yo creo que los valores en nuestra ciudad ahora es momento para superar juntos esta pandemia y construir la economía juntos. Estoy aquí para pedir que la ciudad extienda al moratorio para prevenir desalojos durante la pandemia. Que la ciudad use el dinero del Fondo Federal para darle apoyo a las familias cuyos dueños no quieren aplicar al programa estatal. Le pido su apoyo a nuestra propuesta comunitaria que les enviamos a llegar este día. Gracias.
Excuse me, clerk. Will there be translation for members of council and the public? Yes, Ms. Martinez, if you could provide the translation after each of the public comments, that would be preferable.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Luz María Morales. Miembros del consejo espero se encuentren bien de salud todos, ¿verdad? Pues soy miembro de Vecinos Unidos de Fe en Acción. Vivo aquí en Redwood City por 12 años. Pertenezco también a la parroquia de San Antonio de Padua. Pues la preocupación más grande es al ver también a nuestros vecinos, hasta familiares, que se han tenido que ir a otras partes con mucho dolor porque van arriesgando la vida de sus hijos pequeños y un poco más grandecitos. Ahora, se les pide, por favor, que apoyen esa propuesta que les hicimos llegar hoy por email para hacer una comunitaria feliz y aparte la familia, para que sea un bienestar para todo. Pues esta pandemia nos ha dejado tanto dolor, tanto físico como moral y sentimentalmente al ver tantos descesos que ha habido aquí también en nuestra comunidad. Les agradecería mucho que tomen en cuenta todas nuestras peticiones de antemano. Mil gracias y buenas noches.
At this time, we would like to have the Spanish interpreter provide the translation of our previous speakers. Ms. Martinez? Madam clerk, is Ms. Martinez? Madam jurado, si Miss Martinez estaba teniendo dificultades técnicas antes, ¿sería posible que el Consejo recibiera una versión escrita de las traducciones?
Mayor, esto es Diana, si pudiera pedir, por favor, disculpen. Adriana, estás todavía en la oración y puedo escucharla. ¿Podrías decirnos en inglés que nuestro sistema de traductores no funciona correctamente? ¿Podrías decirnos qué estaban diciendo tus oradores? Simplemente brevemente.
Sí, lo haré.
Gracias. Vale, gracias.
Gracias, jurada.
Entonces, disculpen, solo quería asegurarme de cuántos de los oradores pudieron interpretar.
Ella no pudo interpretar, el sistema no funcionaba correctamente y ella estaba mutada con nosotros, no pudimos escucharla.
Vale, entonces el primer orador fue Nieves Pacheco. Permítanme pasar al canal inglés ahora. Sí, lo escucho. Escucho a usted en el canal español. Entonces, estoy en el canal español, ¿escuchas?
Adriana, podemos escucharla muy bien. Si pudieras darnos una breve traducción.
A través del mayor, si me permite.
Sí, sí.
Gracias. Tengo dificultades técnicas también, así que adelante, Miss Ramirez.
Gracias. Así que, Miss Martinez está lista para interpretar. Si el Consejo y cualquiera que quisiera escuchar la interpretación puede dar el botón debajo que dice interpretación y puede dar inglés, escucharán las interpretaciones de Miss Martinez.
Sí. Gracias. Muchas gracias, Miss Filo Real. Lo siento, tengo dificultades técnicas, pero gracias por tener paciencia. Muchas gracias por ofrecer esa información y cualquier cosa que tengas que podamos enviarnos sería muy apreciado, ya sea por correo electrónico o por correo electrónico. Eso sería útil. Gracias. El siguiente orador es Fabiola S. y mi último orador es reverendo Leon Stanford.
Disculpen. Disculpen, ¿será posible que el resto de oradores compartan su testimonio y su comentario?
¿Cuántos oradores quieren hablar en este momento?
Solo hay cuatro oradores que han compartido su comentario y somos 13.
Vale, esperaba haberlo sabido antes.
Le dije al jurado del pueblo que seríamos de 10 o 13 oradores en español. Por eso les conecté hoy temprano.
Vale. ¿Hay alguna forma en que podrías resumirlo? No quiero no escuchar su testimonio. Solo quería ver si había una forma de resumirlo porque realmente escucho el mensaje. Creo que nuestros miembros del Consejo también lo oyen, y nos gustaría poder hacerlo. Y luego cualquier cosa que podamos enviarnos sería muy apreciado.
¿Será posible que ellos y la traductora estén en el canal inglés y como hizo ella en el comentario anterior, la traductora después de que la gente compartiera?
Vale, creo que, ya que ustedes notaron, y como dije, estábamos teniendo dificultades técnicas, por lo que ha sido un poco un desafío para nosotros y lo disculpo. Así que, si no te importa, si pudieras resumir, y en el interés del tiempo, tal vez pudieras resumir lo más rápido posible y tener la interpretación. Y ciertamente, ¿no hacemos eso? Empecemos entonces.
Entiendo las dificultades técnicas. Si quieres, puedo interpretarles. Aquí estamos juntos.
Hola. Hola, soy Grisela Ortega.
Hola, mi nombre es Grisela Ortega.
Tengo 12 años viviendo aquí en Redwood City.
Viven en Redwood City.
Adriana, disculpen, Adriana, no es necesario que hagas eso. Aparentemente, el sistema funciona bien. Solo necesitábamos usar, los oradores ingleses necesitaban usar el sistema de interpretación. Muchas gracias. Lo siento por eso. Esa fue mi culpa.
Perfecto. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Lo apreciamos.
Hola, soy Grisela Ortega. Vivo aquí en Redwood City hace 12 años y quiero agradecerles, en primer lugar, porque hemos tenido ayuda y ahorita la ocupamos nuevamente porque nuestro trabajo no nos está sosteniendo para pagar una renta. Pues ocupamos en este momento, con esta pandemia ocupamos la ayuda de ustedes. Yo sé que ustedes nos pueden dar esa ayuda y se los agradecería mucho para la familia que vivimos aquí en Redwood City. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Ahora, si pudieras escoger al siguiente orador, porque no puedo ver quién quiere hablar. Así que, en el interés de avanzar, quiero estar seguro de que no nos olvidamos de nadie. Adriana.
Buenas noches.
Sí, ahora tenemos otro orador, Patricia Morales. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Patricia y somos miembros de Vecinos Unidos de Fe en Acción y estamos ahorita con una preocupación de toda la comunidad de Redwood City. Tengo 16 años viviendo en este lugar y nuestra economía ha estado muy mal y todos estamos preocupados porque las rentas, a mí en lo personal, están subiendo. Incluso el dueño nos dijo que si no lo pagábamos el día primero, nos va a subir 50 dólares cada día. Y la verdad, eso se me hace injusto por la pandemia que estamos pasando. A mí se me ha reducido el trabajo y sobre todo tenemos que pagar o la renta o los miles. Y nos han reducido el trabajo. Muchas familias han sido desalojadas, de las cuales no se me hace justo, porque todos estamos trabajando por un ideal que es sostener a nuestra familia y que todos unidos podemos hacer las cosas bien. Gracias a Dios primero y a ustedes. Buenas noches.
Gracias. Adriana, ¿tienes otro orador?
Sí, nuestro próximo orador es María Morales.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consejo. Soy miembro y vecina de Unidos de Fe en Acción. Somos de aquí de Redwood City, viviendo pues ahorita 12 años, en un lugar muy bonito que es aquí en Condado de San Mateo. Pues estamos pidiendo, por favor, ese apoyo que ustedes pues muy gentilmente se expresan ante todos nosotros por hacerles llegar esa propuesta, esa unión comunitaria, pues es para el bien de la familia. Hemos sentido mucho el dolor de ver irse a muchas familias que también les han subido mucho su renta y a veces con esta pandemia es doloroso porque no encuentran. De un departamento se van a vivir a un cuarto por este problema que tenemos ahorita. Pues yo de todo corazón les pediría eso, que intercedieran y que se vieran una solución, verdad, para que en esta comunidad que representamos y ustedes que representan también, seamos más unidos y que Dios mueva ese corazón a todos para que seamos una familia feliz en este mundo feliz. Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Gracias.
Nuestro próximo orador es Adriana. Lo haré.
Adelante, Adriana.
Sí, buenas noches, miembros del Consejo. Mi nombre es Adriana Agustín. He vivido aquí en Redwood City por 20 años, tengo cuatro hijos y soy una de las cientos de familias afectadas por la pandemia porque me quitaron horas en mi trabajo y de causa de eso no pude pagar mi renta y me desalojaron. Y en mi personalmente pedí ayuda al centro comunitario y se me fue muy difícil tener los servicios porque piden muchos requisitos. Y ahorita estoy con una familia porque es muy difícil pagar al alquiler porque es muy alto y como mi familia es grande no es tan fácil llegar a ayudas como en lugares como centros de ayuda porque somos muchos. Entonces también yo me gustaría pedir de favor que hubiera más accesibilidad en ese tipo de, para pedir ayudas, que no sean tanto los requisitos. Ahorita yo les pediría que se aprobaran una mandatoria de desalojo en toda la comunidad a partir del 1 de julio para proteger a miles de familias que no se vean afectadas como yo, para que estén seguros en sus casas y que haya programas de asistencia de alquiler para que las familias estén seguras en sus hogares, con sus hijos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
Our next speaker will be Gilberto. Mi nombre es Gilberto Juárez. Este tengo, tengo 10 años viviendo aquí en Redwood City. Estoy desempleado y sinceramente este, pues se me hace difícil ahorita así porque a veces se lleno de estrés, porque pues los gastos son grandes y tengo, se me hace, ¿cómo diré? Este estoy viendo a veces este esa angustia, esa desesperación porque no, no, no me alcanza para poderse vivir como antes venía viviendo y entonces ahorita yo necesito ayuda y el apoyo para que yo pueda, yo este, fuéramos a salir adelante de todo lo que nos está pasando. Este y sinceramente nosotros, bueno especialmente queremos ese apoyo porque, porque la verdad este estamos viviendo unos tiempos tan difíciles y queremos que, que no nos dejen solos porque es, porque en este momento necesitamos ayuda. También este pedimos que pues sinceramente como yo, especialmente a mí pues ahora yo estoy viviendo en un este, en un apartamento muy reducido porque pues como no tengo ya este los recursos pues se me hace difícil ya, ya pagar lo que venía yo pagando porque pues ya no, ya no me alcanza y entonces para mí es una desesperación y eso como que, como que me estresa y me asquicia mucho pero pues necesitamos ayuda para que uno pueda no ser, pueda liberarse de todo eso. Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Our next speaker is Veronica Martínez.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Veronica Martínez. Soy líder de Fe en Acción, vivo acá en Redwood City y desde que empezó la pandemia me he visto afectada, me quedé sin trabajo y después de seis meses encontré un trabajo pero solo de tres días y de cinco a seis horas. Y es difícil ahorita y teniendo, aún teniendo con tres hijos. Estoy aquí porque pienso que Redwood City debe aprobar una moratoria de desalojos a partir del primero de julio. Para proteger a miles de inquilinos del desalojo. Redwood City debería usar 18 millones del dinero federal recibido recientemente para crear programas de asistencia de alquiler más amplios, para familias más vulnerables y pedirle a los miembros del Consejo y el personal de Redwood City que deben llevar a cabo conversaciones de alcance con los propietarios animándolos a presentar una solicitud. Y quiero que apoyen la propuesta comunitaria que hoy se les mandó para mantener a nuestras familias saludables en nuestros hogares. Pienso que juntos podemos superar esta pandemia en nuestra comunidad si reconstruimos nuestra economía juntos. Gracias por escucharnos y buenas noches.
Our next speaker is Fatima García.
Hola, buenas noches, miembros del Consejo. Mi nombre es Fatima García. Yo vivo en Redwood City por más de dos años. Mi preocupación es que nos desalojen a mí y a mi familia ya que tenemos adeudo de dos meses. Aún no hemos recibido aviso de desalojo pero nos tienen presionados de cuándo vamos a pagar.
Okay, did you hear anything, Fatima? The... Would you hear anything? Okay, okay, she will repeat everything.
Adriana. May I ask you how many more speakers there are?
Three only.
Three? Okay, thank you. Okay, continue.
Mi preocupación es que nos desalojen a mí y a mi familia. Hola, buenas noches, miembros del Consejo. Mi nombre es Fatima García. Yo vivo en Redwood City por más de dos años. Mi preocupación es que nos desalojen a mí y a mi familia ya que tenemos adeudo de dos meses. Aún no hemos recibido aviso de desalojo pero nos tienen presionados de cuándo vamos a pagar. Yo creo que todos debemos estar unidos en estos momentos para ayudarnos como comunidad, a que nadie sea desalojado en estos momentos difíciles. Queremos que apoyen la propuesta comunitaria que les enviamos ahora por Neol. Muchas gracias y feliz noche.
Our next speaker is Amelia Garibay.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, miembro de Consejo. Mi nombre es Amelia Garibay. Vivo aquí en Redwood City por 40 años. Soy líder de Fe en Acción. Ahí soy miembro de la Iglesia San Antonio. Lo que a mí me preocupa es que hemos ido a tocar puertas y escuchamos y escuché muchas preocupaciones de las personas que están pasando por los desalojos.
Yo creo que los valores en nuestra ciudad ahora es momento para superar juntos la pandemia y construir la economía juntos. Estoy aquí para pedir que la ciudad extienda al monatorio para prevenir desalojos durante la pandemia. Que la ciudad use el dinero del Fondo Federal para darle apoyo a las familias cuyos dueños no quieren aplicar al programa estatal. Le, para, pido apoyo a nuestra propuesta comunitaria que les enviamos a hoy. Gracias y que pasen buenas noches.
Our last speaker is Trinidad Villa Gómez.
Hola, buenas noches, miembros del Concilio. Mi nombre es Trinidad Villa Gómez. Vivo en Redwood City por más de 20 años. Pertenezco a la Iglesia de San Antonio de Padua y soy miembro de Fe en Acción y de la Unión de Vecinos de Aquilera de Redwood City. Yo como cientos de familias tengo adeudos de renta y tengo ser desalojada ya que hasta el día de hoy no he podido recuperar mi trabajo completamente. Me preocupa qué vamos a hacer el primero de julio si no completo la renta. Pienso que juntos podemos pasar... Pienso que juntos podemos sobrepasar esta pandemia reflejando nuestros valores en nuestra ciudad y con nuestra comunidad. ¿Pudieran ustedes invitar a los dueños de vivienda a aplicar por el recurso estatal? Ya que algunos dueños no han querido aplicar y han rechazado hacerlo. Sabemos que hay un fondo de 18 millones del dinero federal recibido recientemente para crear programas de asistencia de alquiler. ¿Cómo están pensando ustedes distribuirlo a las personas que estamos en peligro de ser desalojados? Ya que sabemos que no hay personas que no tienen un contrato formal. Les insto para que trabajemos juntos en la propuesta comunitaria que les acabamos de enviar esta tarde como Fe en Acción y animar a nuestra comunidad también ya que hemos hecho miles de llamadas y es la misma situación. Los, las rentas siguen subiendo aún en medio de esta terrible enfermedad. Muchas gracias y que Dios me los bendiga y nos, y, y yo sé que unidos lo podemos lograr.
Thank you. Adriana, was that your last speaker?
Yes, she was. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Thank you, Ms. Víctor Real for your assistance and my thanks to your guests that you brought this evening. I know that took a lot of courage for them to speak, so I appreciate that. We have two others, excuse me, two final speakers, Fabiola and then the Reverend Stanford. Thank you for waiting.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, hi, thank you Mayor Howard and City Council. My name is Fabiola. I'm a Redwood City resident and I wanted to talk about two items today. First, item 8A, and express my support for Roxanna Enriquez to be part of the Police Advisory Committee. I have known Roxanna for 25 years as grew up together in Redwood City in the North Fair Oaks area. Roxanna is a great community member whose input and opinions would be very valuable for this committee. Roxanna has been through the juvenile system here in San Mateo County. Her life experience mirrors that of what a lot of us in Redwood City go through when we deal with the police. She was able to overcome going through the system and now gives back to her community. She is very involved in the Redwood City community. She volunteers her time at St. Anthony's. She helps feed people. She volunteers her time at St. Anthony's, she helps feed people. She's been helping get community members vaccinated with the COVID-19 vaccine and she's sat on multiple boards that advocate for youth who have been through the juvenile system. Roxanna is a very trustworthy person in the community and has been doing a lot of advocacy for many years. And unlike other candidates that are applying, she has been through the system and has been impacted directly and has not worked for it. And she knows that our community doesn't always have positive experiences with police. Having her on the committee would be a great addition to make sure all of our voices are heard, especially those that are most vulnerable. Thank you for considering her and I hope you vote for her. And then lastly, I just wanted to add and echo everyone else who doesn't want to limit public comment. I just want to say thank you for allowing the previous speakers to finish as there hasn't been a final say yet on limiting public comment. And as Redwood City residents, we should all be heard no matter the language. It is also very important for all of us to be heard without having to worry about time restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, and my final speaker is Reverend Stanford.
Good evening, I'm the Reverend Ian Stanford and I came to Redwood City in July of 2020 to become the rector of St. Peter's Episcopal Church on Clinton Street. It's across from Sequoia High School. While new to Redwood City, I am not new to the issues around unhoused people. I support the comments of previous Faith in Action speakers. I speak as a priest and a member of this community. I believe we must care for the most vulnerable among us. This is not just a faith statement, but it's a good public policy. We know that those who live in unstable housing have adverse outcomes in many areas of their life. We know that children, for example, have struggled to maintain their education and keep up with their classmates. We know that their parents, if they are employed, have trouble maintaining that employment if you don't have a stable roof over your head. We also know things like managing healthcare is near to impossible if you're living on the streets. Particularly if you have ongoing conditions. I speak as a trans man. I am intimately aware that the loss of housing can cause one to lose one's whole support systems, especially with access to mental health and medical providers that are supportive of one's life as a trans or non-binary person. So I urge the city council to do everything they can to prevent the addition of thousands of unhoused people to our community. So please support the Faith in Action, the Five Point Community proposal. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. If you were not able, excuse me, to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. At this time, all public speakers can stay on the Zoom call or continue to follow the meeting through the live broadcast either on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org or on cable television on local channel 26, Comcast Channel 27, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Moving on to item number six, the Consent Calendar. These are items on the calendar that are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. At this time, the city council will vote on all items except for item 6J, which will be considered after this vote on all other consent calendar items. I'd now like to ask the council if they would like to either make a motion or if there is any discussion on the consent calendar.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
A second.
Motion has been made by council member Ready and a second by council member Aguirre to approve all items on the consent calendar except item 6J. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll please?
I will. Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I will now read all items that have been approved. The investment report for period ending December 31st, 2020. The single audit report and other independent auditors' reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. Grant application and project approval for MTC's Safe and Seamless Mobility Quick Strike Program for the Roosevelt Avenue Quick Build Traffic Calming Project. Award contract to Kim Lee Horn to complete the design phase for the Roosevelt Avenue Quick Build Traffic Calming Project. Grant application for advanced assistance from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to plan for improvements to the levees at Redwood Shores in order for the levees to meet FEMA re-accreditation standards and to address future sea level rise. Initiation of proceedings to consider amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance, Affordable Housing Impact Fee and the Implementing Resolution Policies and Standards, the Parks Impact Fee Ordinance, Residential Development Park Impact Fee, the Quimby Act Implementation Ordinance and the Park In-Lu Fee and introduce a new commercial park impact fee. Letter of Support for Mid-Penn Housing's Request for Community Project Funding for the Affordable Housing Project located at 1,000 Twin Dolphin Drive, formerly the Town Place Suites. Agreement for Services with Calwest Lighting and Signal Maintenance, Inc. for Electrical Maintenance of Streetlights and Traffic Signals. Purchase of one Freightliner cab and chassis with an articulating aerial device. Waive first reading and introduce an ordinance to mandate electronic and paperless filing for Fair Political Practices Commission, Campaign Disclosure Statements and Statements of Economic Interest. Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Municipal Code, Chapter 27, Article 9, Section 27 dot 102, allow the option of collecting sewer service charges for residential customers with one dwelling unit per parcel on the tax roll pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 5473. Waive first reading and introduce an ordinance adopting local standards and procedures for the operation of the two-year temporary recreational vehicle Safe Parking Program. Waive second reading and adopt an ordinance to require hazard pay in the amount of $5 per hour for employees of large grocery stores and large drugstores. Approve the minutes of April 12th, 2021 and April 13th, 2021 city council meetings and approve claims and checks from April 26th, 2021 through May 10th, 2021 and the usual and necessary payments through May 10th, 2021. Now taking up item 6J, consideration of council meeting management strategies recommended by the city council's Governance Subcommittee, including introduction of an ordinance to start council meetings at 6:00 PM and modification of public comment practices in the Guide to City Council Communications and Business. We pulled this item from the Consent Calendar so that the Governance Subcommittee made up of myself, Vice Mayor Hale and Councilmember Ready can provide clarity regarding these recommendations through a brief presentation. Vice Mayor Hale will make the presentation and the committee is available to provide additional comments if needed. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you Mayor, next slide please. So in the past year due to the pandemic, we have fundamentally changed the way government operates. With Governor Newsom's executive order to allow meetings to take place online, we've seen a surge in civic participation, which is both fantastic and welcome. In fact, this has yielded twice as many speakers in 2020 as we had in 2019. With the pandemic, our workload has also grown with the city working hard to address the immediate needs in our community. At times, this has meant important agenda items get pushed out, creating a domino effect on our calendar. So what have we been doing so far to address this? Next slide. Well, several things. First, we have limited speakers to two minutes when many speakers are present. Second is starting meetings earlier to accommodate additional public engagement. And third, as we did tonight, we've been holding more study sessions to allow for more input. In February during our council offsite, the council discussed these dynamics and asked the Governance Committee to come back with some recommendations. Councilmembers discussed how to make sure that important policy matters are given enough time for city council and community consideration. We value community engagement and we want decisions to be made at a reasonable hour when the staff, the council, and the community can engage in a meaningful discussion. Continuing meetings until late in the evening does not allow for full participation of the public and also means decisions are made when council and staff are not in the best frame of mind. It's important that agendized topics get the opportunity to be heard by the public and do not have to be moved. We're working this year on a number of policies with intense meeting requirements that have a deadline. As you heard tonight, our housing element and as you will hopefully hear tonight, a redistricting process, to name just two. So the recommendations this meeting, this evening, are meant to help the city and the council to adapt to new standards. We expect that the experience will continue to change as the pandemic wanes, which is why our committee has recommended assessing the effectiveness and necessity for these changes in six months. Next slide. We're not alone in this challenge. Traditionally jurisdictions in San Mateo allocate three minutes per speaker during public comment. However, now numerous jurisdictions, including San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, are allocating two minutes or even less. Many cities are finding themselves in a similar situation as we adapt to the new format so that we can meet the needs of our communities. Next slide. So the Governance Committee has two recommendations for action tonight. The first is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance to change the regular start time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And the second is to approve revisions to the Guide to City Council Communications and Business as listed here. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Ready, a fellow member of our committee, for a couple of additional remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. One of our communicator's correspondents mentioned Portela Valley and how much they lifted up the importance of public comment and it piqued my curiosity, so I checked in with Portela Valley and their meetings started seven, but they are often over by 8:30 or nine because they have generally about eight to 15 people from the public joining them for their meetings. So I just wanted to point out how very different many of our cities are. That Redwood City has a huge agenda, many times dealing agendas dealing with many aspects of, from sewers to rent stabilization and tonight the extra pay for grocery workers. So this council is engaged and wants to be engaged with the public and I encourage those who feel constrained by a two-minute talking points to engage with us personally outside council meetings. So I completely support this because we had a lot of discussion about this. We wanted it to be, we wanted it to be a reasonable solution so that our public has an opportunity to speak but that we are not leaving the, we are not having meetings that last until midnight. So, so that we're still fresh and able to make decisions in a rational sort of way. But, so I'd like to move the, our Governance Subcommittee's recommendation to our council colleagues.
And I'd like to ask the city attorney, can we make the motion and by making a motion and a second, that would include all of the items that are listed, one, two, and one, two, and all the items that are underneath that, it would be inclusive?
Correct Mayor. So you have two items and the council, as they wish, as you wish, can move both items at the same time or separate them so that you do the ordinance amendment first and then the Guide to Council Communications revisions second.
Well, ask councilmember Ready, what's your intention?
I'd like us to move along and I move approval of both items.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Hi, this is Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. I'd like to make a recommendation. Hi, can you give me?
I think we, what we need is, I'd like to see if there's a second for the motion and then we can have discussion. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it, Hale.
Okay, Vice Mayor Hale is the seconder. And discussion, councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be that we keep this recommendation, right? We keep this, but we take out the limit on public comment. As someone who was giving a lot of public comment during last year in the summers, I know that two minutes is really nothing for really hard pressing issues and I think this approach is a really easy approach but isn't gonna really have the results that we are looking for because we're trying to encourage engagement after such a long period of time. We're not just, was the council not diverse? Like the people engaging were totally not diverse. Like they were very small pockets of people with the ability to come in and publicly comment. But now we have Zoom, people are able to give the three minutes allotted, things have changed. Things change per meeting due to discretion. But I think the time allotted should start at a minimum with three minutes because there is a lot of pressing stuff and I don't think there's quite enough avenues out there for public engagement that is direct as it is like on city council. They could call us, but at the same time, they can't speak to all of us and all of our concerns in the public, the same way as a conversation in private. There is a source of accountability to the public that, that we can measure here because people can say what's really on their mind and it's not just known to us on the council, but it's made public for everyone listening, for the entire staff, for everyone who wants to look at our records at what Redwood City is doing, you know, for when the news wants to talk about it. For when it becomes like a legal thing, a legal case, or when, you know, or an issue like police brutality, you know, you really need these records. And so giving people the access to talk to us directly and let them have sufficient adequate time is really important during this time when there's not yet, there's not yet enough engagement from everybody. Because we're working on equity, but we still don't have a council that's like as diverse as our city. And we still have neighborhoods that are very gentrified and segregated. So what we really need is to encourage as much conversation. I think we ought to have a solution that isn't quite so like easy. Like this seems like very easy decision to make, but I don't think it's gonna have the results we're looking for. Maybe we need more council meetings, talking about more with council, like what's a controversial topic, you know? Like maybe we don't talk about ADUs with the hazard ordinance on the same night, you know? And it kind of goes along with my same idea coming into this, like as a council member. This is a very, it's really hard to be council member because you need like, like extra money or a house where you're retired and to just have the time to do this for $500 a month. So like maybe like we should make the, like we should pay council members more to do more work so they could have more city council meetings. I just think these are approaches that would be better because we would encourage more engagement, we'd have more scheduled meetings directly with the city council and the public. Yeah.
Excuse me, councilmember Espinoza Garnica, I appreciate your comments, but I think I'd like to stick to the point. We are, it's running late and we have a lot of business to cover.
Okay, absolutely. So I would just like to finish off and say that I think we're not doing enough to engage with the public and this is the only matter, or the only way to get, the public really has a direct connection to the council and if we cut it to two minutes, we're gonna cut into the, like the difficulty and agitation that's just building up with our residents right now with not having sufficient engagement with us.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I can say that I, I agree that we want more public engagement so I am hoping that two minutes will allow us to have many more people speak in an evening. As was witnessed tonight, we spent almost two hours and we still have more opportunities for public engagement tonight, so that's my hope. Councilmember G.
Thank you Mayor Howard, thank you. I want to thank the committee for their deliberation. Thank you, Mayor Howard. Thank you. I want to thank the committee for their deliberations and bringing this forward. Just have a kind of question, clarification question, and then a comment. I appreciate and understand the intent of this and the moment that we're in, as we're all kind of meeting remotely. What, what, would, any thoughts from the committee on what would happen if Governor Newsom changed the executive order and said we all had to go back in person? And how would this change? I think he has tentatively said we're reopening in the middle of June, and we're all kind of wondering what that looks like, but if the government, executive order goes away regarding the Brown Act and we're all supposed to go back in person, how would this, particularly the second part, number two, apply to in-person meetings?
That's an excellent question, and I don't have an answer for you at the moment. I'd like to ask our city manager if she could comment to this because I know we've been discussing what are next steps. And she may be able to touch on it briefly.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you for the question. So we are interested in learning if there will be changes in the rules around the Brown Act and how city council members may participate. And I think there are a couple of layers to what happens to these particular rules when the meetings change. One layer is what will be physically possible in the city council chambers? How can we set that up so that the council can still be distanced, so that members of the public that are present could still be distant? That actually is probably the easy part. We've heard tonight several members of the public express interest in continually, or continuing to be able to participate remotely. And I'm not, I'm not surprised by that. I think we'll see sort of hybrid approaches in school settings, for example, for some amount of time. One thing we have been learning about that process is it is challenging to do well. It takes some effort, I think, to have the right kind of technology to do that well. We don't have that today. And so one of the things is that we're looking into is what could be approaches that would enable both in-person and virtual participation. But I would say we're very many months away from being ready for something like that. It is a satisfying experience. And even tonight, obviously, we were challenged with our first time with the translation. So, sorry, the long answer to the question is, even if we're able by law to return in person in the, in the nearer term, I think by practice, it's going to take some time to be ready for a sort of a hybrid participation model.
Well, I mean, thank you, and I'm not sure we, we as a city council are in charge of the Brown Act. So I think we have to wait and respond and react to the governor or those that have the higher authority on the Brown Act. Now, I just would like to just conclude my comments that, you know, for, what we're trying to do is manage meeting, public engagement, and the city's business. And all I can do is share an experience that it hasn't been raised, at least in the staff report or the conversation, or if it was, I missed it, my apologies. In the work I do, I have the opportunity to attend many public meetings, city councils, board trustees, and things like that. And it is very difficult when meetings get late at night from a decision-making standpoint. But just as important as we want community engagement, we also need to recognize that we have staff involved as well as sometimes we have consultants involved. And if we do go in person and the meetings continue late at night, I will share the story that has stuck with me for many, many years to this day. I was at a board of trustees meeting that went to 2:00 AM and did not finish. It was continued after 2:00 AM. An architect that I was with decided he couldn't stay any longer and left the meeting at 12:00 AM. On his way home, he got pulled over by the highway patrol because he was falling asleep. We shouldn't be also putting our consultants and our staff at risk for late-night meetings. So we have to find a balance between making sure our public has the opportunity to engage, but our staff and our consultants that are with us for these items later this evening are not at risk if we go to in-person meetings and we keep them to wee hours in the morning. And so that is a very personal story that I know Charles was the architect. And I talk about, because we remember it very clearly, that he was fortunate. He got pulled over before something bad happened to him. And so that needs to be part of the conversation as we talk about meeting management, how we engage the public, but also keep everybody involved safe so they can go home and their family. Doing this remotely, there's no travel. But if we do change or the state makes us change, we need to be able to pivot and adjust accordingly. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Your comments are very well taken. The motion has been made by Councilmember Ready and seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. I'd like to, at this time, ask for a roll call vote, please. There's Ms., Ms., Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, could you make it very brief, please?
I do have a question, yeah. So, for example, we had many faith and folks come in to talk about the moratorium, and I won't go more detailed than that. I just want to have an example. Can we schedule, like, meetings to talk about potential things later, like in the, like, to say, like, like an eviction moratorium? Can city council schedule a meeting to do that versus then having like, or I don't know, like, doing these things to have more meetings? Like, is it feasible for us to have more meetings to talk about what's on our agenda? I'm just curious to know about that, like, from, from the manager's perspective, I guess.
Well, actually, based on the information that was given to us tonight, that'll be a discussion item that we will have as far as deadlines that are coming up. It was mentioned several times, the moratorium deadline. So yes, those conversations will come up, and if, if the appetite is for the council to have additional meetings, we certainly, we can have that discussion. But I'd like to keep this moving along right now because it is running late, and we've had people being very patient waiting for appointments, and we also have deadlines on a couple of these items that if they don't get introduced tonight, we have a problem because it has to get taken care of tonight.
Sure, I certainly was just trying to figure out what maybe, if there is anything that could limit us from doing this.
And I could always talk to you offline about that. Vice Mayor Hale, did you have a question?
I just, I just wanted to offer that we have done that. That's exactly what we did last week on public safety. There was so much community interest on the topic that we, we hosted a separate meeting on it for three hours. So that has been done, and we're doing that for exactly this reason, which is what we were speaking to earlier in the presentation and open to more ideas like that.
Thank you. That's an excellent example. Thank you. So now I'd like to ask the city clerk if she would call the roll, please.
Certainly. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Uh, no.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica opposes.
Okay, item number seven, we must do tonight, annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships Program for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Housing Leadership Manager Lynn Lancaster will give us a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council members. Tonight I'll be presenting on the city's 2021 action plan for the CDBG and Home program. Next slide, please. My presentation tonight will cover questions that the city council should be thinking about during the presentation, background information on the action plan process, proposed activities and funding recommendations for the upcoming fiscal year, and lastly, the recommended action for the city council's consideration. The questions the city council should be thinking about during my presentation this evening are, does the city council support the proposed CDBG and Home activities and funding recommendations for fiscal year 2021 to 2022? And does the city council want to approve the 2021 action plan, which will position the city to receive over $1 million in new CDBG and Home funds? At the condition of receiving CDBG and Home funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, the city must adopt a five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is a strategic policy document that provides priorities and strategies for meeting the needs of low-income community members over a five-year period. The current consolidated plan covers the period of 2018 to 2022 and consists of four major components. A community needs assessment, five-year priority needs and strategies, an assessment of fair housing, and an annual action plan for each year of the five-year plan. The action plans provide a concise summary of the actions, activities, and funding resources that will be used each year to address the goals identified by the consolidated plan. The 2021 action plan represents the city's fourth year of the consolidated plan. Next slide. The funding that is available for next fiscal year consists of just over $800,000 in CDBG funds, which included approximately $770,000 in entitlement funds and $40,000 in estimated program income. The city's home entitlement allocation is approximately $330,000, and we are carrying over just under $50,000 in unspent prior-year Community Housing Development Organization, or CHODO, set aside funding. Overall, the 2021 action plan includes just under $1.2 million in CDBG and Home funding. Although CDBG and Home funds can be spent on a variety of activities, there are spending limits on certain types of activities. The city can't spend more than 20% of CDBG funds plus program income on administration and fair housing. And no more than 10% of home funds can be spent on administration. Additionally, the city can only spend up to 15% of CDBG funds plus program income on public service activities. Lastly, the city is required to set aside 15% of home funds to support a project carried out by a CHODO. Next slide. The city operates on a two-year funding cycle for public services, fair housing, and minor home repair activities. All of the two-year funding cycle activities went through an extensive application process last year, and therefore were not required to apply for funding again this fiscal year. These activities are only required to submit brief renewal applications. Housing, economic development, and public facility improvements are activities that are on a one-year funding cycle and must apply for funding every fiscal year. The city issued a notice of funding availability for these activities in December of 2020. The city only received one eligible CDBG application from Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center for an economic development activity, and the city did not receive any home applications for, did not receive any home applications. The city's Housing and Human Concerns Committee, or HHCC, is responsible for reviewing applications for both CDBG and Home funding and making funding recommendations to the city council. On March 23rd, the HHCC held a public hearing and conducted funding deliberations. On my subsequent slides, I'll review those funding recommendations. In addition, the draft action plan was also published for a 30-day comment period from March 26th to April 25th, and no comments were received. Now I'll review the HHCC's funding recommendations for CDBG. As I previously noted, public services are on a two-year funding cycle. The public services recommendations were approximately $15,000 to each of the following organizations. However, the city is expecting $19,000 less in program income for the current fiscal year compared to what was estimated. This in turn has reduced the spending limits for fiscal year 2122 for public services by $1,784. However, Hip Housing has canceled their contract for fiscal year 2122, which was for $15,000. Hip Housing has indicated that they can no longer accept CDBG funding because it's created constraints and administrative burdens to their organization. Staff proposes using $1,784 from Hip Housing's canceled contract to offset the decreased public services allocation. Additionally, both staff and the HHCC recommended redistributing the remaining Hip Housing funds evenly to the other public service grantees. Each organization would receive an additional $1,888. This proposed increase is shown on this slide. And as noted, the public service grantees that are being recommended for funding are Bay Area Legal Aid, Cora Life Moves, Mental Health Association, Rape Trauma Services, Samaritan House, and Star Vista. It's also recommended that the city council fund the following three minor home repair programs for approximately $20,000 each based on the already-approved two-year funding cycles. The programs are the Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities Housing Accessibility Modification Program and two Rebuilding Together Peninsula Programs, National Rebuilding Day, and Safe at Home. For economic development, Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center requested $50,000, and the HHCC recommended granting the full amount. For public facility improvements, approximately $417,000 is recommended for the Fair Oaks Community Center project, which I'll discuss in more depth on the next slide. For CDBG administration and fair housing, approximately $162,000 is recommended. Since the city didn't receive any applications for public facility improvement projects, staff evaluated potential projects of city-owned facilities. This evaluation was based on CDBG eligibility, project readiness, and the ability to comply with CDBG regulations. CDBG funds have fairly strict timely expenditure requirements, and therefore the projects selected must strike a balance between being shovel-ready and meeting the rest of the CDBG requirement. Staff reviewed the city's ADA transition plan and the city's capital improvement program project. The Fair Oaks Community Center kitchen remodel project has been part of the CIP plan. However, high construction cost has delayed the project for several years. Staff recommends the Fair Oaks Community Center project for CDBG funding as it addresses a need in the community, is shovel-ready, and is eligible under CDBG regulations. The project will consist of the following improvements: new exterior paint, a redesign of the administrative area, which will include new COVID-safe workstations and meeting locations for both residents and visitors to meet with staff either in person or virtually in a more conducive manner. And, but lastly, it will involve remodeling the kitchen at the Fair Oaks Adult Activities Center. The project will utilize the existing footprint of the kitchen while upgrading the electrical and plumbing infrastructure as well as adding new cabinetry, countertops, commercial-grade appliances, flooring, and paint. Next slide. For home funds, it is recommended that approximately $33,000 be allocated for administration, $98,000 be set aside to be used by an eligible CHODO as required under the home regulations, and $247,000 is recommended for a housing project that is yet to be determined. As I noted, the city issued a notice of funding availability for home funding but didn't receive any applications. Home funds have significant number of restrictions for relatively small amount of money compared to other city housing funds. Historically, the city has aggregated multiple years of home funding in order to make home funds more desirable to developers. The city expects to receive home program income from the sale of the city-owned property at 1306 Main Street later in 2021. The city will likely issue another home notice of funding availability once this program income is received as I expected that the development community would be more interested in a larger home, a larger amount of home funding. And so with that, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving the 2021 action plan and authorizing the city manager to execute and file documents related to the action plan for Seminole to HUD and by motion authorizing the city manager to execute funding agreements with organizations identified in the 2021 action plan. And again, there's the questions for city council, which, for the purpose of time, I will not repeat, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lancaster. I'd now like to open the public, I have two hands raised before we open the public hearing. Councilmember Ready?
Sorry, I did have a question, but it wasn't strictly a clarifying question. So if you want to open it to public hearing before I ask my question, that would be more appropriate. I apologize.
No, that's fine. Why don't we open up the public hearing? I'd like to see how many speakers we have. I ask anyone who wishes to speak to this item only, please raise your hand and keep it raised until your name is called to give your comments. At this time, I have no speakers for this. At this time, I have no speakers for this item. So I'll, at this time, close the public hearing. And we will go on to council discussion and questions. Council member ready? Would you like to start?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Ms. Lancaster, for this report and for all you do for us in this regard. So I noticed that we had not, in the staff report, I noticed earlier that we had not spent the home funds, and I appreciate the, your comment about it not being enough to be desirable for some of our developers. So, so do you have an estimate of how much money would be collected after the sale of the property that you mentioned?
Yeah, I believe it's around 1.5 million. However, we are still getting clarity from HUD as to how much of that we, as a city, get to keep rather than to return.
Okay, and that would be in addition to the 350 approximately. So my thought, my original thought before you made this comment about wanting, perhaps wanting to collect other money, was that I was wondering if the 350,000 might be used as an incentive to some of our current nonprofit developers to, to offer some of their units to ELI rather than allow the low-income residents.
I think that's a really interesting suggestion that we haven't looked into, but that's a, it's really unique. I have not seen that done. I think the big thing would be whether the projects received home funding in the past, and if they can demonstrate there's a financial need. But that is definitely something very interesting that I think we can look into further.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Are there any other council comments or discussion? Seeing none, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the work of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. Having been on that committee for 10 years, I know the amount of work that they put in to make these recommendations and the research that they do to be, to assure the community that the money is very well-spent. And my congratulations to all these organizations who serve the most vulnerable in our community. I really appreciate the work that they do. I'm hoping possibly, Ms. Lancaster, with the sale of the property, would a portion of that money be able to be put into rehab and preservation of existing housing stock to preserve it for affordability?
Yes, that is definitely something we're interested in, since a significant portion of the sales proceeds will actually be coming back to our CDBG fund, and that is an eligible CDBG activity.
Thank you. I appreciate that. If there's no further discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
So, Mayor Howard, I'd move for approval.
Second.
Okay, I heard Council Member G make the motion for approval, and the second by Council Member Aguirre, I believe.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, we'll start with Council Member G.
Yes.
Council Member Ready.
Yes.
Council Member Smith.
Yes.
Council Member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council Member Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale. And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Now, we have Item 8A and 8B, and I have been told that there, we, both of these could be put off to a future council meeting, but I'd like to ask the council if they'd indulge me that 8A, we have many people in the audience who are candidates for the Police Advisory Committee, and I think you might agree with me that I'd like to see us at least do 8A. If we can't get to 8B, we'll move it to our next council meeting so that we do have time for council reports. I know we have a couple of very important ones to give tonight, and I don't want to miss that opportunity. So if you'll indulge me, I think, and if you agree, we'll move on to Item 8A and see how we do with that one. I don't see anyone not agreeing with that, so I'll ask our city clerk Pamela Agar, who she's going to introduce the item, which is our appointments to the Police Advisory
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Good evening, city council members. Tonight, you are being asked to make appointments to the newly-established Police Advisory Committee. At the March 8th city council meeting, the Police Advisory Committee was formed to support partnership and transparency between the community and the Redwood City Police Department and to review police policies. The Police Advisory Committee is composed of 11 members that will be selected tonight. Four of the seats are at-large. They are for four terms that will expire May 31st, 2025, and these four at-large seats will be selected by a majority vote of the council. Seven seats will be filled by direct council appointment. These seats will be for two-year terms expiring May 31st, 2023. During the month of March, a recruitment was conducted to fill these seats, and the city clerk's office received applications from 20 qualified candidates to be considered for appointment. These candidates were interviewed by the city council at a special meeting on April 13th. Tonight, we are also seeking your approval to keep the current applicant pool open to fill any additional recruitments and to be incorporated into any future recruitments for vacancies that occur through March 31st, 2022. Appointments will be made by roll call vote. The four at-large seats will be appointed first. A candidate must receive a majority or four votes in order to be appointed. Next, the council will then each make their direct appointment by me calling the roll and each council member stating the candidate they wish to appoint. Unless there are any council comments or questions before proceeding to the vote, Mayor Howard may call for public comment at this time.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Agar. I'm trying to, here we go. Thank you. Now we'll take public comment on this item. To see how many speakers we have, I ask everyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand now and keep it raised until your name is called to give your comment. Give it a couple of more seconds. At this time, we had six, yes, we have six speakers, and my last speaker is Greg Bryant. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak, and certainly if you want to be brief, that's fine. I will call two at a time, and the clock will start as you speak. And I will start with Kate Heister and then Ryanne.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and members of the council. My name is Kate Heister, and I am speaking tonight in my role as the San Mateo County Director for Fresh Lifelines for Youth, or FLY to our friends. Tonight, I want to strongly support Jesse Labonte's application to the Police Advisory Committee. Jesse is a highly respected member of our FLY family, by staff, by his peers, and by our system partners. We are thrilled that he has chosen, that he has chosen to pursue this opportunity. Jesse brings a valuable and unique perspective as a young trans man with lived experience in the justice system. Further, in the years that we have known Jesse, he has shown himself to be a thoughtful, engaged young man who cares deeply about those around him. We believe he would be a tremendous asset to the committee and hope the council will appoint him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryanne, and then Emile.
Hello, my name is Ryanne, and I'm a community member who has lived, worked, or gone to school in Redwood City for more than half my life. I urge the council to appoint the following five individuals to the Police Advisory Committee: Roxana Enriquez, Hannah Haddad, Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, and Gregory Trimble. These are members of our community who have either had firsthand experience of the violence of the police in our city, or they recognize the violence of the police done to others, and they have openly called for significant structural change. These are people, these are the people we need to be our, on our Police Advisory Committee. And please note that many members of our community, including myself, do not approve of current or former police officers being appointed to this committee. It is also inappropriate for relatives of current or former council members to be on this committee. Additionally, it is morally wrong for people who are pro-policing to be on this committee. The Police Advisory Committee must move forward as an independent voice for the community, not an extension of the RCPD or city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Emile, and then Ian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'd like to echo what Ryanne said, speaking before me. This is a committee that should absolutely feature independent voices, and especially in light of national events, I am urging the council to select community members who have been directly impacted by poor policing policies in the past, or are supportive of police defunding or reform, or have shown a consistent dedication to civil rights initiatives. Given the purpose, the purpose of this committee and the events that drove its creation, as mentioned before, I don't believe it is appropriate to have current or former law enforcement officials on this panel. This panel is already tasked with working directly with RCPD, and if officers are on the committee itself, then the committee just becomes nothing more than an extension of the police department, and its members would not be able to exercise independence. As a result, I would like to discourage our council members from appointing James Dudley and Milton Borgans to this panel. And on a similar note, as Ryanne mentioned before me, it is inappropriate to have former or current city council, the relatives of former or current city council members on this committee, and we want to avoid nepotism or as much nepotism as possible. So I would also discourage members from appointing Stephen Howard. And finally, panel members should also display empathy to our unhoused, non-white, and neurodivergent residents, because they are much more likely to be impacted by law enforcement, and thus their voices should be the ones we center in this discussion. Thank you.
My next speaker is Ian, and then call-in user one.
Hi, my name is Ian. I live and work in Redwood City. First off, I want to say that I support the speakers who have come before me in everything that they have said. In any discussion of what public safety and public service should look like in Redwood City, we need to be centering the voices of those who are most vulnerable and of the communities that have been negatively impacted by policing as it currently stands, as well as those who will bring forward bold proposals rather than tinkering around the edges of our existing harmful system of policing. For this reason, I encourage the council to appoint Roxana Enriquez, Hannah Haddad, Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, and Gregory Trimble. Thank you.
My next speaker is call-in user one, and then Greg Bryant.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and city council. My name is Marcelina Luna, a longtime resident of Redwood City. And I too are in agreement with Emile, Ryanne, and Ian that we have, we're establishing a police advisory committee, but yet some of these candidates come from the police department or retired police officers. And also to have ex-council member spouses or current council member spouses be on this committee, it's, it's unbelievable. It's like everything that has to do with some sort of change, everyone wants to still have their hands in the pie. So if this is a true police advisory committee, it's to enact change, and those people should not be allowed in this committee. Thank you for your time.
My next speaker is Greg Bryant, and my final speaker is Johanna Rasmussen.
Oh, this is Greg Bryant, one of the applicants, and I do appreciate the opportunity to apply for this committee, and I do hope to be chosen, of course, to serve. I do want to support the previous comments that were made about having people that have been affected negatively by the police on the committee. I think that would be a great asset to the committee, and, but I also hope that the committee in total represents people from all different areas, if you will, and affects by the police and opinions, and there are people who can also take those opinions and maybe set them aside and listen and adapt what they decide, or what they advise, excuse me, to something that represents others and the community as a whole. That's all. I, thank you very much.
Thank you. My last speaker is Johanna Rasmussen.
Thank you. My name is Johanna Rasmussen, and I currently serve as a commissioner on the San Mateo County Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission, and I would like to ask our city council to appoint Clara Jekyll to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. If you weren't able to provide public comment on this item, you can email your comments to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. I will now turn it over to the city clerk to facilitate the appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. We will start with the four at-large seats. These are for four-year terms that expire May 31st, 2025. I will call the council roll in alphabetical order, and as I call each council member's name, please state the names of the four candidates you wish to appoint to the committee. The first four candidates to receive a majority vote from the council will be appointed. We will start with Council Member Aguirre.
Thank you. The names that I'm putting forward are Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Clara Jekyll, and Jesse Labonte.
That's, that's four names.
Did I put too many?
So you have Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, and Clara Jekyll.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, Council Member Espinoza Garnica, please state the four names of the candidates you wish to appoint.
Sure. So I'd like to appoint Jesse Labonte, Clara Jekyll, Gregory Trimble, and Bill Newell.
You have Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, Bill Newell, and Gregory Trimble.
Yes.
Thank you. Council Member G.
Thank you. Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Mary Winfield.
You have Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, and Mary Winfield. Council Member Ready.
Thank you. Council Member Ready. Thank you. Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, and Mary Winfield.
You have selected Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, and Mary Winfield. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Council Member Smith.
I have Roxana Enriquez, Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, and Monica Calandres.
You have Monica Calandres, Roxana Enriquez, Clara Jekyll, and Jesse Labonte. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, Council Member Smith. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you. I have Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Clara Jekyll, and Mary Winfield.
You have selected Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Clara Jekyll, and Mary Winfield. Is that correct? You have selected Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Clara Jekyll, and Mary Winfield. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor Hale. Mayor Howard.
Thank you. I am voting for Jim Hartnett, Jesse Labonte, Mary Winfield, and George Dale.
George Dale. You have selected George Dale, Jim Hartnett, Jesse Labonte, and Mary Winfield. Okay, if you could just give me one moment to tally the votes. Thank you for waiting. We have two candidates with five votes from the council, Roxana Enriquez and Jim Hartnett. So Ms. Enriquez and Mr. Hartnett will be appointed. We're going to go to a second round of voting, and you will have, you will, we will call the role of the council again, and then you will state the two names of the candidates that you wish to appoint to the four-year terms. And you can remove Roxana Enriquez and Jim Hartnett from your list as they are appointed. This time, we'll start with Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. If you could please state two names of candidates you wish to appoint.
Yeah, Clara Jekyll and Jesse Labonte.
Councilmember G.
Excuse me. Jesse Labonte.
Um.
I think he only had three votes. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. Monica Calandres and Mary Winfield.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Councilmember Ready.
Those are my votes as well. Monica Calandres and Mary Winfield.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Monica Calandres and Clara Jekyll.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Aguirre.
I just have a question before I vote. Ms. Aguilar, isn't four the number of votes that they needed, or did it have to be five?
It's four, but we had four candidates with four votes.
Okay, all right. So Monica Calandres and Mary Winfield.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Mary Winfield and Monica Calandres.
And Mayor Howard.
Monica Calandres and Mary Winfield.
Thank you. Let me, give me one more. Thank you. In this round, Monica Calandres received six votes, and Mary Winfield received five votes, so they will be appointed. So for the four at-large seats, we have Roxana Enriquez, Jim Hartnett, Monica Calandres, and Mary Winfield. We will now go to the direct council appointments. I will call the council role in alphabetical order, and when I call your name, you will state the one, the name of the one candidate that you wish to appoint directly. And this is for terms that are two years expiring May 31st, 2023. Councilmember Aguirre.
Clara Jekyll.
Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hannah Hadad.
Councilmember G.
Laura Aiden.
Councilmember Ready.
Ernie Schmidt.
Councilmember Smith.
Jesse Labonte.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Let's do Darren Brown.
And Mayor Howard.
Milton Borgans.
Thank you. Give me one moment. The seven candidates directly appointed to the committee are Laura Aiden, Milton Borgans, Darren Brown, Hannah Hadad, Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, and Ernie Schmidt. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
And Mary Winfield, did you get her?
So, Ms. Aguilar, maybe you'd like to announce the eleven then, would you mind?
Certainly, yes.
Thank you. That'll make it clear.
We'll start with the four at-large appointments. With five votes was Roxana Enriquez, and also with five votes was Jim Hartnett. With six votes was Monica Calandres, and with five votes was Mary Winfield. Those are the four candidates who will occupy the four at-large seats that are for four-year terms. For the seven direct appointments that will be occupying the two-year terms are Laura Aiden, Milton Borgans, Darren Brown, Hannah Hadad, Clara Jekyll, Jesse Labonte, and Ernie Schmidt.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar. Congratulations to the candidates who were chosen, and I also want to thank everyone who applied for this, the Police Advisory Committee. I really appreciate you stepping up and offering to volunteer for this committee. I wanted to let you know if you were not appointed tonight, there's still open recruitment for the Historic Resources Advisory Committee, Library Board, the Planning Commission, and the Transportation Advisory Committee. If you are interested in being considered for any of these committees, please be sure to confirm your interest in writing to the City Clerk no later than this Wednesday, April 28th. Certainly, an email is a good idea, too. Just let the City Clerk know that you are interested in serving or having your name considered for one of these committees. Thank you again so much for your interest. And let's move on to, now, Item 8B. In the interest of the late hour, I'm going to ask our city, oh, I'm sorry, do it.
Yes, Mayor Howard, I apologize. There is a request to keep the applicant pool open through March 31st, 2022, to be incorporated with any future recruitment for vacancies that might occur within the next 12 months.
Thank you. That was an excellent suggestion, and thank you for reminding me. So I'd like a council motion and a second to maintain the current applicant pool through March 31st, 2022, to fill any future vacancies that occur during that timeframe. Do I have a?
Don't move. Second?
Okay, moved by Councilmember Aguirre and seconded by Councilmember Ready. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I have been told, considering the late hour, that we can move Item 8B to a future, probably the next council meeting. If not the next council meeting, a date to be determined. But if we do get done earlier than we expect, we can always go back, but I would like to make sure we leave time for the presentations.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We do have a consultant that is prepared to assist us with this item, and so it would be best to either decide now to take it or to let him know so that he can have the rest of his evening.
Oh, if we've had a consultant waiting all night, I don't think this is something we want to move. We talked about cost containment, didn't we?
There's both a cost issue, and there's also a delay in the overall timing of the process, which gives me some concern. So I know we can be fairly brief, and we could ask the staff and consultant to move quickly through the presentation, and maybe just skip some slides and focus on council questions.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea. If we could ask our staff and the consultant to be brief, because this is just an initial initiation of the process. There's very, much more to come. So I'll let you get started. Our Assistant City Manager Alex Kudjikian and the city's consultant Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners will give a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and members of the council. Alex Kudjikian, Assistant Senator. Item before you this evening is a consideration and of the selection process by which the city will conduct redistricting for City Council election districts as a result of 2020 U.S. Census. So with me tonight is, co-presenting is Paul Mitchell with Redistricting Partners, who is the city's hired demographer, demographer who will be helping us through this process. So really quickly, cover background, cover some census information, committee training, community mapping tools, and outreach communications. And I'll try to be as quick as possible through this. And then the questions this evening, we have four questions. Should the city form an advisory redistricting committee to support the city council redistricting process? Should the proposed makeup of the committee be 11 members, four at-large, seven from the districts? Should all the members be appointed by a majority vote of the council? And then if there's any input on staff's proposed outreach and communication strategy. So just real quick with some background, in May 2019, the city transitioned from an at-large election system to a district-based election system. The city council adopted the final map in 2019 where there were seven districts. It literally is a one-and-done map where it was only utilized for the 2020 election where four districts were elected. And now, in compliance with federal and the California Voting Rights Act requirements, the city must undergo redistricting once again based on the 2020 U.S. Census data. So on March 8th, the city council approved an agreement with Redistricting Partners to help guide us through this approach. And then Redistricting Partners then made a presentation to the council's Governance Subcommittee on March 16th to really go over the redistricting process options and timelines available. So the proposed timeframe will go from April of this year, literally it's a year, April 2021 tonight, all the way through January 2022. But we need to submit the final map to the county by law by April 17th, 2022. So tonight, Redistricting Partners' Paul Mitchell will go ahead and present the different options that were discussed with the Governance Committee and is available to answer any technical questions as well. So Paul, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name's Paul Mitchell. We're with Redistricting Partners. Chris Chaffee is here with me as well. I'll just go through the slides and be happy to answer any questions. Alex, you want to go to the next slide? So the census data is the real key data point we're waiting for is the PL file. It's the actual decennial redistricting file. You might have noticed that today they released data on the reapportionment, but we still have to wait for that actual data that goes down to the census block so that you can conduct a redistricting. That actual official file won't be available until September 30th. The data that we need with all the adjustments from UC Berkeley will be available definitely by early November. The deadline, as Alex said, was April 17th. The Fair Maps Act is the process you'll be utilizing in this redistricting process. It is somewhat similar to the California Voting Rights Act process. So you have pre-map hearings where you can get community input. Then you have hearings where you have maps that have been public for seven days. And then when you have your final hearing, it will be on a map that's been public for seven days, and it'll just be an up or down vote on that map. The different methodologies you can use to get through this process include having an advisory committee, where the advisory committee can have an application process, city council member appointment, and then that advisory committee can go through a lot of the process of doing the outreach, and then refer back to the city council. You can have an independent redistricting commission, which in the state law is an independent commission, both in how it's appointed, so not appointed by council members, but through an independent process, and then its ability to actually take the redistricting all the way through the process and actually bypass the city council and have those plans be adopted and sent to the county registrar for implementation. And the third option is to use a city council-driven redistricting. But be clear that when you do a city council-driven redistricting, you still are having to follow all those open, transparent rules under the Fair Maps Act and ensure that the public engagement is really at the forefront. The, when you do an advisory committee, just real quickly, you're going to be selecting through an application process and appointing through the city council. We would encourage you to have an application pool that is diverse in terms of its demographics, socioeconomics, and skill sets, because you'd need different skill sets for the purposes of redistricting. The timeline includes a 30-day application period. The committee would conduct those outreach hearings to gather community of interest testimony and then refer a final map to the city council. The city council then would still have to have at least two hearings to discuss and then vote on the final map. In an independent redistricting commission, then you're doing the process, you're essentially handing it off to an independent commission. You would have a process that the city would implement for identifying those commissioners. The state doesn't mandate a specific way of appointing them, but it has to be done independently. There is limited time to do all those public outreach hearings, and any delays in the process could place you in a position of having some challenges to try to make sure you get it all done by that required April 17th date. And again, that final map is adopted and sent directly to the county registrar without any city council member involvement. With a city council driven redistricting, it is the traditional method in that the city council is actually taking control of the process, but it's not the traditional method in terms of how redistrictings have been done in the past. You still have a very open, transparent process. You can have up to two hearings prior to maps being drawn. You're required to have at least two hearings after maps have been drawn. You're required to only discuss maps that have been public on the city's website for seven days. And then again, like I said, when you do actually pass the plan, it has to be of a map that's been public for seven days. So it is a very open process. The timelines for these, on the next slide. As Alex showed that earlier format, the timelines allow for this process to be completed through January, either in this method, which is through the advisory redistricting committee, or in the next slide with an independent redistricting commission. So both of these are timelines that you have in your packet. And then finally, the last one would be the city council process timeline. The, the one key thing about doing a process that involves an advisory committee or an independent commission is the need for additional trainings. We recommend a series of trainings that go through everything, starting with the role of the commissioner, kind of what are some best practices for a committee as they're going through this process? Some real training on the Federal Voting Rights Act, information about what racially polarized voting is, how it's utilized in determining what districts might be necessary, going through all of the redistricting laws, which again includes federal and state, really diving into understanding what communities of interest are. It's common for people to understand what a community is, to have shared community interests, but also being able to know how to take community of interest testimony, translate it into mapping, and translate that into ultimately districts. We'll do a presentation and training on the fundamentals of redistricting, everything from telling people what a census block is to understanding the mapping tools. And then finally, training on online mapping tools and software that are utilized in the redistricting process. The community mapping tool that we recommend is called DistrictAR. This is a program that allows you to draw lines and submit those to the city for the purposes of the redistricting process, and they can be used with any of those three structures, the independent commission, a committee, or the city doing the work themselves. And Alex, I think I'll hand off to you for this.
Thank you, Paul. So I'm now going to cover staff's proposed outreach and communication strategy. Redistricting process is an opportunity to engage all members of the Redwood City communities. Staff has a robust outreach and community engagement plan that consists of strong collaboration with community partners and leveraging a variety of media sources to convey information like print newsletter, information like print newsletters, social media, regular blog posts, print ads in local media and ethnic media, and household mailers. A dedicated section of the city's website has also been established so community members can easily access all redistricting information and tools. The proposed timeline contemplates seven public meetings located in each of the seven city council districts with the option to hold additional meetings as needed. The purpose of the hearings is to engage the public around identifying communities of interest through survey worksheets and draft mapping. The meetings are currently planned to be virtual for the time being, but could transition when safe to in-person and are planning for some pop-up events this fall. All maps, all maps, materials and community engagement information will be translated into Spanish and Mandarin, and interpreter services will be available at all public meetings. Additional accommodations will be made to ensure access for people with disabilities. Staff will conduct stakeholder mapping and utilize a multi-pronged approach for communication and outreach throughout the initiative, including outreach to our community groups and neighborhood associations, host the pop-up events, and utilize all the city's communication platforms. There was also discussion on the consideration. Sorry, the Governance Subcommittee also met to consider all available redistricting options. All members indicated interest in forming a committee and did not support a process driven solely by the city council. However, all members expressed concern about conducting a thorough recruitment for an independent redistricting commission, given the limited timeframe for completing redistricting. For comparison, the cities of Long Beach and Berkeley each took six to eight months just to select a, to end seat their independent redistricting commissions. The Governance Subcommittee voted to recommend forming an advisory redistricting committee, reflective of the diverse Redwood City community. That would be tasked with collecting community testimony, conducting community engagement, and recommending a map to the city council. The Subcommittee recommends all appointments to the committee be made by majority of the city council and the committee be made of four members selected at large and seven members selected by district for a total of 11 members. There was also discussion on the consideration of an at-large elected mayor. At the February 6th city council offsite meeting, individual council members expressed interest in reviewing the selection rotation in term of the mayor position. One option is to have an at-large mayor who would be directly elected by the voters. This option was discussed in the fall of 2018 when the city council originally began the transition from at-large to district elections. City staff has conducted additional analysis on the process needed to transition from an appointed mayor to an at-large elected mayor for the 2022 election. In order for the city to transition from an appointed mayor to an at-large elected mayor, a majority-approved charter amendment voted on by Redwood City voters would be needed to begin the transition process. The next time a charter amendment can be placed on a statewide election ballot is during the statewide primary election in 2022, which is too late as the timing does not align with the city's current redistricting process and Fair Maps Act mandate of April 17th, 2022. So I'm now going to really quickly cover the eligibility and recruitment for the advisory redistricting committee. If directed by council to form an advisory redistricting committee, city staff is prepared to launch a robust 30-day recruitment in order to present the city council with a diverse applicant pool to appoint from. The city council would interview qualified applicants and make their selection at the regular meeting scheduled for June 28th. At the same meeting, the first public hearing and redistricting education session would occur. The Fair Maps Act does impose some restrictions on who can serve on an advisory redistricting committee. Redwood City elected officials, their family members, their staff, their staff members and paid members of campaign staff of elected officials are not permitted to serve as members of the advisory redistricting committee. Additionally, in forming an advisory redistricting committee, the city is allowed to impose additional eligibility requirements as it sees fit. So here are the questions for council consideration this evening. And then the recommendation is the Governance Committee's recommendation before the city council this evening to adopt a resolution establishing an advisory redistricting committee to conduct public engagement and advise the city council on the adoption of the new city council district map. So this concludes my presentation, and Paul and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kajikian. And thank you, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Chaffee. I see you're both there. And really appreciate you hanging with us tonight. I appreciate that a lot. If, I don't see any council hands raised at the moment. We'll have time for discussion after the public hearing. So we'll take public comment on this item. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand and keep it raised until your name is called to give your comment. So if you would raise your hands now. Give it another few seconds. I have three speakers at this time. Okay, I have three speakers, and the last speaker is Ryan. And there'll be no more public comment taken after Ryan. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak, and I'll call your names in the order they're raised. And the clock will start as you begin speaking. I'll begin with Ian and then Emil.
Hi. So one of the most basic tenets of good government in a representative democracy is that the people should elect their representatives. Politicians shouldn't get to cherry pick their voters. The only way to ensure this is to form an independent redistricting commission whose members are not appointed by the council and where the council will not have final say over its own electoral maps. Many of us remember the controversy surrounding the previous redistricting when the members of city council, four of whom are still on the council today, were widely accused of favoring their own seats rather than drawing a map that accurately reflects our communities and ensures that minority populations do not get marginalized. This issue even ended up delaying final approval of that map. The process being set in motion tonight will shape city council races for the next decade. So it's vital that we do it right and not take the path of convenience just because it's faster, which this council loves to do. The staff report even lays out a method for implementing a real independent redistricting commission. And while the commission's work will need to be on a slightly accelerated timetable, the benefit of having an independent and transparent redistricting process free of undue influence by the people who will be running as candidates far outweighs any inconvenience caused by the time crunch. The council has taken action tonight to permanently restrict public comments, which I already spoke about. As elected officials, your job is to represent people. And when the people disagree with what you're doing, that should influence your decision. The fact that you've instead chosen to tune out the public shows why the council can't be trusted not to wield corrupt influence over the redistricting process and why a map can only be trusted to uphold the needs of the community if it is done completely independent of this corrupt council decision. The council appointed an ex-law enforcement officer to a committee that specifically arose out of a public call to de-scope, defund, and at the very least, provide a basic level of public accountability over the police. What we got instead was an advisory committee that serves as PR for the police, and with an ex-officer on the committee itself is just a public relations extension of the police itself. The council can't be trusted to have any influence over the mapping process.
Thank you very much.
Only or the map is bullshit.
Thank, thank you very much. My next speaker is Emil and then Ryan.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Hi, yes. As noted in my previous comments, our city council has an issue with establishing trust. And unfortunately, this is a historical issue. As the previous speaker mentioned, during the last redistricting process, local news characterized this process as turbulent and with reporters writing that many residents believed that the final map was delayed specifically because city council members prioritized preserving their own seats over creating representative districts. And as previously mentioned, this was just for one election. The map that will result from the process tonight will shape our city for the next 10 years. And the only way to ensure public trust is to keep this process clean and free of council influence. And to be perfectly honest, these concerns are completely valid. Minutes ago, Mayor Howard appointed Milton Borgans to the police advisory committee. Milton is a former city council member's husband and of city council members whose election Howard openly supported in 2020. This city council, especially Mayor Howard, has shown an alarming tendency to nepotism and self-serving decisions. Even tonight, Howard went out of her way to make Spanish-speaking residents feel unwelcome and ignored tonight. And these actions were frankly an embarrassment to our community. At the very least, Mayor Howard herself cannot be trusted with overseeing our diverse electoral map. And we really do need an independent committee to oversee this redistricting process. Three council members were up for reelection in 2022, including Mayor Howard, and they should not be able to choose their own voters to maintain their positions. Thank you.
Thank you. My last speaker is Ryan.
Hey, this is Ryan. I support what Ian and Emil have said before me. City council members, especially those up for election in 2022, should not have a final say over redistricting. Elected officials should be chosen by their voters, not get to choose their own voters. I recommend an independent commission rather than one that is advisory to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments. If you weren't able to provide public comment on this item, please email your comments to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. I'd now like to open it up for council discussion. And before we do, I have a feeling we may be here. If you don't mind, could we get a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30 so that we don't have to interrupt to do that? Would I have a motion to do that?
So move. Um, Councilmember Espinoza.
Councilmember Espinoza Barnica and seconded by, I believe, was Councilmember G?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Okay, a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, and the council questions are up there. Okay, good. So I'll open it up for council discussion, and we have our consultants and Mr. Kajikian here to answer any questions. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah. So I would just like to echo what the commenters had to say because I very much agree that we need independent party looking into this because, you know, there's all of us that are susceptible to type of self-serving agendas here. And I think reelection could be a possible one. And to keep it fair, to keep it really true to the rest of the community, it'd be great to have an oversight or a group that would be a third party without any real intervention by us, a city council, because I think it'd be bad for our, not only would it look unethical, but it just is, it really would be transferring a lot of power over easily to people that are within our social groups, you know, so within the revolving door of politics that is today. So those are the comments I have right now that I like to keep short.
Thank you. Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Just a clarifying question of Mr. Mitchell. When I had originally applied to serve on the state's redistricting commission, and one of the interview questions was what I thought was some of the risk elements of redistricting. And unfortunately, the federal government lived down to one of them because one of my comments was late production of the census data. To your knowledge, what is the degree of certainty that the census data, the type of data that we need, that the commission or whoever it is that's going to do the work, is going to have the data available by October 1st?
Well, I'll tell you, I think a lot of us that are in the business of working around census data feel a little bit better today, given the fact that the reapportionment data was released today. It has been subject to, as our account, four or five different delays. And ultimately, they settled on a release date of April 30th, and they beat that release date by four days. So that at least gives us a little bit more confidence that, that things are on track. The reapportionment data, while there were differences from some of the expectations, they weren't any wild differences from expectations. So most of the people who work in the data feel as though that's a good sign. But you're absolutely right. There's been a lot of challenges in the census. Late data is still a big concern. It's a big concern not just for Redwood City and your redistricting, but also for the state. for states around the country and cities and counties around the state. So it's definitely something we're keeping an eye on. Right now, the census is saying they will have a raw format of the data. They're calling it a legacy format by mid-August. If that happens, then we'll be able to potentially get some early data to help facilitate some of the first outreach. And then October 1st or so, we're having final data, being able to map by November. Seems really feasible, given the deadlines that we're meeting now.
On one level, Mr. Mitchell, thank you for that because on one level, we're fortunate that our next council election is in November versus other jurisdictions that have a election in June. Late data makes it very difficult for redistricting in a shorter time span than already outlined in your presentation.
Yeah.
And I would like to also add my thank you and gratitude to the governance committee because this is not an easy decision. Luckily, hopefully, it's over once every 10 years. The governance committee has to take this on. And maybe because of another conversation again, depending where the other parts of the conversation go in the future. But again, thank you to the governance committee for tackling this. In general, I am supportive of an advisory committee that has a, that was recommended by the governance committee. I was interested in seeing how the 11-member voting would go and the police advisory committee demonstrated that it, I was surprised and pleasantly surprised it went fairly well this evening. So thank you to the governance committee members.
Thank you, councilmember G. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard. I have a couple of questions for, I think it's probably most appropriately directed to city staff. So my first question is, it seems to me, based upon the staff report, that the primary reasoning behind the ARC recommendation as opposed to the IRC recommendation had to do with the timeline of appointment, which we estimated at six to eight months. I just want to confirm that that is correct. And then I guess my follow-up question to that is, I'm, I guess I'm kind of, I'm trying to understand why it would take six to eight months when we have BCC recruiting processes that in what it seems to me to be about two to three months. So where is that six to eight month number coming from?
So I can clarify that, councilmember Smith. So the six to eight month was just giving an example of two other cities who have gone through the independent redistricting commission. Those were the cities of Long Beach and of Berkeley, just trying to get a really good cross-section. For us, in our timeline, we actually do an abbreviated version of what an independent advisory commission, if we were going to do the recruitment, it's a lot faster. I believe it's like about three months total in time if we're going to put it. But that's fast tracking because what we would have to do, the next step would be is you have to find who's that independent body. So we don't have any independent body right now. And so we'd have to identify, either you'd allow staff to identify an independent body or the council would have to identify the independent body and then also trying to get direction on the makeup of that, just how many members and what's the makeup of the commission. So I'm hoping that provides some clarity for you. We could do it in a short amount of time, just given for a good example of what it would take to get a really good cross-section to work.
Thank you for that. And I just have one more question about the recommendations. So, you know, these options that we've kind of come up with, just in terms of, let's call it the, just the theoretical basis, let's call it, of the, of the recommendations, you know, what organizations or what research, for lack of a better term, can you point to that kind of have led us to those particular options? Because I didn't get a sense of that in the staff report. I'm not sure if there's, I'm just kind of wondering how we arrived at those options. I mean, it seems to suggest that these are the kind of most common options, but what is that based on?
So, so I can take a stab at it and then Paul, feel free to jump in. But these processes are all prescribed. It's all prescriptive under state law of having these committees. So it's all really on point. When you look at the, you know, what is the main, probably, what do most cities in California use? Paul, I would think it's probably a council-driven process. And then it's probably an advisory committee and then you're going to an independent commission. From what I've seen on my time of following district elections, but I'll ask our professionals to weigh in.
You answered that exactly right. These options are laid out in statute and there are very few cities or other local governments that are going to a full independent commission process that didn't do it last year. You know, that had done it like with Berkeley or Oakland or Long Beach. They did charter amendments. They've had processes in place for a long time.
And that's primarily a result of the timing issue or is there some other factor at play?
Yeah, the timing issue has definitely come up with other agencies that have looked at the options. The challenge is that if you're going to create an independent redistricting commission, you really do need to ensure that you're getting a good cross-section with a wide applicant pool. As Alex mentioned, one of the best that we've worked with is in Long Beach. And they were in a situation where they had all that, that work that they were doing in the California council that got stopped because of COVID. So they moved that money into doing outreach for their redistricting commission, ended up with an excellent pool. But it's hard to do that if you're trying to cut corners or do it in an expedited manner.
Okay, yeah. We definitely don't want to cut corners, but we do want to be expeditious. Just one follow-up question to that. In terms of like lessons learned from the ARC process, were there any kind of, you know, specific things that you can point to that were just like problematic in terms of the standing up of an ARC as opposed to an IRC?
So I'll speak to that, Alex. So a lot of that's happening right now. The ARCs are getting stood up by different cities or counties or local governments. So we don't have a lot of kind of post-redistricting analysis to point to as to, you know, their effectiveness. There have been other advisory redistricting processes. As an example, in Sacramento, they've used it before. And so they have existed, but not to the scale that we're going to see this redistricting cycle. Really, this whole establishment of the ability for agencies to either conduct an independent or advisory redistricting commission is rather new with the new Fair Maps Act that just took effect in 2019.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I'll just move into brief comments. I'm in support of the ARC specifically for the reasons that were laid out by our consultant and by Mr. Kojikian. I think that the timing, the level of urgency, especially in reference to the delay in the census data, don't leave us with many options, to be honest. And so I think that moving forward with this particular type of structure makes sense. In terms of decomposition of the district, I think 11 also makes sense. It allows us to bring as many diverse voices onto the committee as possible. I'm happy to go with the process that we went with tonight, which was the seven at large, excuse me, the four at-large members and the seven appointed by district. I think this process played itself out well tonight. And then in terms of the outreach strategy, my only, my one question that I had earlier today for the city manager was about, it seems that you're beginning the outreach process before any of the census data comes out in October. And I think that that is fine. You could, you know, reasonably get around that as being an issue. But I'm concerned to a certain extent that without, you know, that we're going to have a public input process around maps that we have very little understanding of how they're going to ultimately play out in this public engagement process. So I'm not really sure if the public engagement process will be substantive as a result of that. So I want to make sure that we're thinking about that and that, you know, we're at least bringing that in mind as we move forward with public engagement. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor Hale.
I wanted to provide a quick comment on councilmember Smith's question. When we, as the committee, were meeting, the timeline, if I recall, was less of a factor than our ability to actually get that, that representative independent panel. And that means they're not connected to any of us, to any candidate, to any, you know, once you consider the size of Redwood City and how well-connected we all are, that became like a very challenging task. And the other clarification I had for Mr. Mitchell was, I thought that with the ARC, there was also the potential that they would actually choose the map. Is that, is that accurate or would the council choose the map? Wasn't there that an option as well? Could you clarify?
There's a version of an ARC that is called a hybrid ARC where the ARC can select two maps and then submit those to council and council's only ability is to select one of those two maps. I haven't seen anybody else do a hybrid committee yet, but that is one of the versions. And one of my, one of councilmember Smith's other comments was about outreach. And I just want to point out that he's absolutely right, that outreach has to be different pre-mapping. And that's what the statewide redistricting commission is doing right now. It's doing a lot of outreach, asking people where their community of interest is. It's more of an abstract. What is your community? How do you relate to city government? What makes you, you know, an important part of the redistricting process, kind of one of the puzzle pieces? And then the mapping process will happen. There'll be a second round of outreach that really focuses on particular lines and what districts look like. But that first kind of community of interest outreach is really important and we do have a long window of time to do that.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, and that is I understand that the board of supervisors have asked the League of Women Voters to do their outreach. Could you, are you aware of what they've decided to do? Could you explain that to us, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I wasn't involved with their process, but I believe that they utilized the League of Women Voters to actually help them with their appointment process for the commission. Is that, maybe Alex also has heard that?
That's, that's my understanding, Paul.
So they weren't asked to do it independent of the board of supervisors?
They're, they're getting the communications and the outreach out, basically. And, and going to be looking through the, they're going to be referring, I believe, candidates for the board of supervisors to make a decision.
I see. So there does, I guess that answers my, I was wondering if they were the independent body that the county chose to keep as separate and apart from the county. But it sounds like they're doing more of an outreach role for the county. Okay, I have Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that, and I think you just got there, that the county is doing an advisory permission or committee, not an independent. And so it was the Women's League of Voters that was helping them with candidate pool.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Further council discussion? No council discussion at this point? Vice Mayor Hale.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the recommendation.
I'll second councilmember Smith.
Okay, Vice Mayor Hale is making the recommendation that, that we recommend the city council adopt a resolution establishing an advisory redistricting committee to conduct public engagement and advise the city council on the adoption of a new city council district map. And that has been seconded by councilmember Smith. Any discussion? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica and, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Hale, you had your hand up first?
Nope, I was just putting it down. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to think of, I was thinking of in the mindset of an amendment, but I'm in favor of an alternative. But I think I would just vote on that instead of having the discussion into this. Or do I build into this discussion a rebuttal if I'd like? Procedure.
Well, it really, it depends on the maker of the motion and the vice-maker of the motion. Excuse me, the, the seconder of the motion. And it, a motion has been made by Vice Mayor Hale and seconded by councilmember Smith. Is the maker of the motion interested in amendment or would you like us to just vote on this motion as is?
Oh, I guess that's not my question. I think I made the mistake of raising my hand because I was thinking as like an amendment, but I'm in favor of the alternative of, so I'm not sure if that is an amendment or.
I mean, a motion for the recommendation, not for the alternatives.
Right, okay, right. And so.
And then if that doesn't pass, you could make a second motion.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the procedure.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. So we do have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk if she'll call the roll, please.
Thank you. We'll start with councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
No.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica opposes.
Okay. So we get started. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Mr. Chaffee. And thank you, Mr. Kojikian. Appreciate the explanation. Moving on to item number nine, our report of conferences. But this is more of a regional transportation initiative and regional housing initiatives. So we'll start with councilmember G giving an update on regional transportation initiatives. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you colleagues for some time. And we'll try to be quick, but it is a very difficult time to be quick because there's such volume during this unprecedented time with funding availability from the federal government. And that's really what is causing a number of transportation initiatives around the region, around the bay, around, along the Caltrain corridor. And it's just really challenging to keep up with all the things that are going on and the timelines. With the new Biden administration, there is a huge amount of funds that are going to become available through CRISA, which was part of the stimulus recovery, Invest in America, and the American Recovery Act. And what's very different this time is that it is probably going to be a once-in-a-generation opportunity to fund infrastructure and transportation. And there are so many different buckets of funds and so many different timelines. It is just moving very, very quickly. For example, Congresswoman Spear presented one of our requests for Redwood City at committee hearings last Friday. MTC took meetings and commented today about initiatives along the Caltrain corridor in San Mateo County. There is just a ton of things going on. So at the higher level, I'll try to be brief. There is AB 2057 championed by Assemblymember David Chu, which talks about some of the principles advocated by Seamless Bay Area and a transportation network manager to coordinate many of the connections between the currently 27 independent transit properties in the region. Concurrently, there's an MTC Blue Ribbon Task Force that is meeting to talk about the same things as well as potential mega-region transit and different topics to better connect and coordinate transportation and the transit properties. The challenge underlying better improvement and coordination is funding because every single transit property is funded differently with different colors of money. And it will take a lot of different things to have that get better. In the meantime, the executive directors and general managers of these transportation agencies are talking about improved connections. Caltrain, there's a ton going on at Caltrain. The electrification project is about 60% complete construction. There's an ongoing process this year to talk about governance between the three partner agencies, service recovery scenario planning about what happens if we return to normal, what happens if we don't return to normal, as well as the organization will launch a quarter-wide great separation study later this year. That was approved by the JPB last year, was delayed because of COVID. With regard to SAM Trans, SAM Trans is trying to do and planning for service recovery. And they have an initiative called Reimagine SAM Trans about how to reallocate the existing resources and bus lines the best they can. There's a community meeting on the 29th for Redwood City from 5:30 to 6:30 where the public comment can weigh in on some of the differences and choices and opportunities for improving bus transit in San Mateo County, as well as the Dumbarton Rail Corridor study is. as well as the Dumbarton Rail Corridor Study is being wrapped up uh, and will be presented to the SAM Trans Board for deliberation and for consideration of what to do next. High-speed rail has not gone away. High-speed rail has just released their new or, or an updated supplemental EIR that focuses on two things. A new special status species and analysis of noise and light on wildlife. That is out for its 30-day comment and comments due by June 9. Um, BART is not sitting around waiting either. They have a Link 21 project in which they are beginning community outreach. Link 21 talks about a new TransBay BART tube from San Francisco to the East Bay. And I think BART is recipient of several, over $100 million just for community outreach to generate comments and consideration from the public. And lastly, as the Chair of the TransBay Joint Powers Authority, um, it's about leasing. It's about increasing ridership into San Francisco from the East Bay. But more importantly, through initial funding from the San Francisco County Transportation Authority, engineering, preliminary engineering is underway on the extension from the Fourth and King Caltrain Station to new San Salesforce Transit Center. And the goal of accelerating that is to be able to get in line for federal funding for a full funding grant from the federal government. So this is just a quick summary of many of the things going on. And the most important thing is to be successful for federal funding is we have to be competitive. We have to speak with one voice. We have to work together with other agencies. Because this is truly a once-in-a-generation lifetime opportunity to seek federal funding for support for our transportation and infrastructure. I know that we have a committee meeting tomorrow for our Transportation Mobility Committee. And um, there's a lot of work to do to make sure that we get our share both in Redwood City and San Mateo County. So Mayor Howard, thank you for the opportunity to update our council as well as the public. There is a lot going on and um, I don't see it going away for the next several months.
Councilmember G, my question to do, to you is what do you need us to do now?
At this point, I think what we need to do now is really pay attention to the different initiatives. I think we need to, at our meeting tomorrow, is to prioritize Redwood City's needs. Uh, we need to coordinate our grade separation efforts with the um, Transit District, with Caltrans' corridor-wide transit grade separation study, as well as we need to be able to work with um, San Mateo County TA and MTC to make sure we're in line for funding. I got a text message this afternoon during um, a JPB Finance Committee meeting from our, one of our MTC commissioners, sort of admonishing me as a council member. Where's Redwood City and what do you need from MTC? Because she felt we weren't in timely communication with her. And I will deal and speak with her tomorrow about that. But there are a lot of different moving parts that we need to kind of make sure they're coordinated and everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. Well, thank you for sharing that and just let us know what we need to do. We want to stay on top of these opportunities for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Howard.
You're welcome. I'd like to um, vote to extend the meeting until uh, 11:40 to be sure that we can get everything else in. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
By Councilmember Ready and seconded.
Seconded.
By Councilmember Smith, I think I heard. Um, we'll need a roll call.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now our regional housing initiatives given by Councilmember Ready.
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard. I'm glad that I have an opportunity to share this with you tonight, and I will be much more brief than I had originally intended. Um, I'm a member of the Steering Committee for the Regional Impact Council, convened in 2020 by All Home, which collaborates with public and private partners to address homelessness in our nine Bay Area counties. Tonight, I'm reporting on the Regional Action Plan, a recently launched, launched call to action. Next slide. More than 35,000 of our neighbors, a population larger than many of our suburban cities and towns, lack housing or any prospect of securing it. These include seniors, people with disabilities, and many working, demanding jobs who live in their vehicles, in tents, and in other situations not fit for human, for human, I'm sorry, habitation. Of those extremely low-income residents, only 15% receive housing assistance. 34% are in rent-controlled units, though the mean rent of $1,200 is unaffordable to most. That leaves 130,000 on the precipice of homelessness. Doing nothing to address the homelessness crisis is enormously costly in economic and moral terms. It is estimated the indirect cost of healthcare, criminal justice, and social services are nearly $2 billion annually. The Regional Impact Council is calling for the, oh, next slide, please, I'm sorry. The Regional Impact Council is calling for the emergency action to address this crisis. We must accelerate work to bring 75% of the unsheltered indoors by 2024 by improving existing systems and investing in the 124 flow model. This model that pounding you here is my dog wanting me to throw her ball. I'm so sorry. Um, this model is underpinned by the strategic pillars of securing housing for lowest-income residents, preventing homelessness for those most at risk, and addressing the stark income disparity of lower-income workers. 124 is not a one-size-fits-all solution, but a ratio that illustrates proportionate investment in three strategies simultaneously. One, additional interim housing unit. Two, permanent housing solutions. And four, prevention interventions is the ratio that will enable us to reach this ambitious goal. And if you would just go to the last slide, please, to give the, um, I had other things, as you can see. Um, the, the, the last slide that gives us the website. So please, um, check out this website. It gives much more information than I'm able to do here. And uh, it is indeed an ambitious goal, but it is truly one that we can, we can reach if we all work together. Thank you for giving me this time.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Ready, thank you so much. I'd like to ask you the same question. Uh, what is it that we can help you with at this point?
Well, much of it I've been mentioning already in, in terms of the uh, making sure that we have um, housing for the extremely low-income, right, residents. And you, you did it as well when you asked us to protect and um, and preserve apartments for low-income residents. It's the same kind of thing. So on one end, you're, you're preventing the uh, people from becoming homeless and uh, creating hu- um, housing for the lowest income among us. And these are generally, the vast majority of people are working. It's just that they're not making enough to support the very expensive housing that we have here.
Thank you. And I think you should take your dog for a walk.
Well, oh my gosh, you can't hear that, can you? Oh my goodness.
Um, that's okay. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, moving on now to Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee. Councilmember Smith, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on uh, the work that the Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee is doing. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a context about the work that we started on uh, Thursday, April 15. You know, we're very much in the formative component, um, kind of phase of the Subcommittee. Um, you know, we met for the first time, as I mentioned, on April 15. We uh, began developing shared language for the Subcommittee's work, including exploring working definitions of equity, structural racism, institutional implicit bias, and impact and intent. Um, we also discussed the purpose and form of a city equity plan and established a shared commitment to ensuring the city equity plan is responsive to community input and needs. We established this Subcommittee's initial schedule as a monthly meeting and determined next steps as well. In our next meeting, we planned to identify core policy areas to be included in the plan and began discussing strategies for identifying key equity issues within those policy areas. So as I mentioned, you know, very early phases, but we're excited um, and motivated to move forward with the development of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I, I look forward to hearing more. Uh, our Communications Subcommittee, Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes, the Communications Subcommittee, which consists of myself, Councilmember Aguirre, and Councilmember Smith, met on April 19. Uh, two main topics. First, we discussed an update of the status of Redwood City's Police Department dashboards. Uh, we know there's been a lot of interest in this data and receiving more information about calls for service, use of force, and other crime statistics. With nearly 100,000 calls received through our 911 Communication Center, it's a lot of data to work through. So much of the data that we want to share has not routinely been collected in the past, but we're working on standardizing how to collect this information in the future. And as a city, we're committed to providing this information in a timely fashion, and we want to thank everyone in the community uh, for their pa- for their patience as well. Thank you to the staff who's been working through the, the data complexity. We also reviewed and provided feedback on a draft March 2021 Communications Analytics Report, which is looking at things like demographics, reach, engagement, open rates, and other communications metrics to make sure that we are using our resources to the best of our ability to reach everyone in our community. And our next meeting will be in June and will be discussing, discussing the by-district communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. And then the City-Owned Property Ad Hoc Committee. I serve on that with Vice Mayor Hale and uh, Councilmember Ready. And the City-Owned Property Committee met on April 21 to prepare and discuss the city's potential property exchange initiative with the County of San Mateo, and there's more to come. Moving on to 9C, our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. First, I just wanted to let the council and community know that we had already been working on preparing a mailing to all addresses in Redwood City regarding eviction protections and rent support. Expect that will go out next week and will be in Spanish and English. Additionally, I wanted to note that Project Sentinel is hosting a virtual workshop on landlord and tenant information resources this Thursday, April 29th at 4:00 PM. And details are available at housing.org. And I know we're also sharing that on the city's social media. And we just received, as you know, the recommendations from Faith in Action this afternoon, and so we will be looking at information for potential city council action. And then secondly, uh, as was previously noted last Thursday, we hosted a special meeting on public safety pledges and activities. This was in response to community interest on these topics. And will be one of several opportunities for community input on reshaping services to meet community needs and support financial sustainability. Related to that, the materials from the meeting last week are available on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diaz. I appreciate it. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 4th, 2021. I want to wish everyone a very peaceful week and please stay healthy and safe. Good night. We're adjourned.